Mission to order, maybe have the roll call, please.
For the Planning Commission, Commissioner Campanella.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Lodge.
Here.
Pujo.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here.
For the TCC, Committee Member Blackerby.
Here.
Burnham. France.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Horn. Rodriguez. Chair Boesch.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on anything that is not on our agenda this evening. Do we have anyone who would like to speak now? Seeing none, we'll close. That's for the item on the agenda, though, right? Okay, so we will move on to that item now, the Bicycle Master Plan update, and I think we probably have a staff report.
Yes, thank you Chair Boesch. Welcome, everyone. I wanted to introduce Howard Green, who is a new member of our Transportation and Circulation Committee, and new to the group, so I just wanted to introduce you and make sure that you're acknowledged. Thank you all for being here. Wanted to, we're going to do the Bicycle Master Plan as our item, and I wanted to give you a little bit of background in where we're at, kind of like positioning. Here's the positioning of this evening, and where it fits into the process and what our expectations are for this evening. So, when we started this process, the council asked us for a community-rich, a community engagement process for the Bicycle Master Plan. It was really that simple. We want, they said, "We want to hear from the community and do what you can to get that." And so, what we did is, when we did our request for proposals for firms, what we were really looking for was different than what we normally would do. Normally, what we've done in the past is we say, "Hey, we need a bike planning firm to talk to us about bike planning." What we, because what council asked for community engagement is their first desire, what we looked for was a firm that could do that well. And so, we chose Melendres. And as you can see, the team up there, on the Melendres team, Melanie Smith is here, and she's in the second row. And then we have Shannon Davis right there in the first row. And there, Melendres, they do, what they do with public processes, they do good community engagement processes. And then, so that is actually, the budget is very rich in community engagement, and what you're going to hear tonight is pretty phenomenal in how our community responded. I can tell you that we were pretty surprised. In my 25 years of transportation here in the city of Santa Barbara, I have not seen this kind of engagement, particularly around bikes, ever. So, we're very pleased with that, you're going to hear about that. The next part of that team is Farr and Peers. And Farr and Peers happens to be also the team that did our general plan, our traffic planning. And so, we were very pleased that Melendres teamed with them, because they understand our city and they also have our traffic model. And that gives them some insights when we're not just talking bikes, that they have the car and the motorist in mind, too, at the same time. And that became very important in the process. So, I want to introduce Matt Benjamin, second row, and then Colin McCormick in the first row. And they are the traffic planners. This, the presentation you're going to hear tonight is, it's very important that it's the kind of the one-two. What did the community say? And then, based on that and community engagement, what is, what are the types of network improvements that the traffic engineering firm came up with to recommend to you? Where are we in the process? Well, we've done, you're going to hear, we did this a community engagement process, but before we send the firm away to write the plan and end, and at the end of the year, give you a draft Bicycle Master Plan, we want to have this touch base right here, right after the community engagement process. One, so that you hear very fresh, what are we hearing the community saying around the future of bicycling in Santa Barbara? And then, two, we started to vet, based on what we heard, some things with the community. We want to tell you how that went, and how we made adjustments to what we heard after we showed the communities what we're thinking, we're hearing, and the types of improvements that may be germane to what we're hearing. And then, we want you to respond to that. We want to hear, "Well, what do you think of this, of these types of things? Do you feel, in fact, that this is in accord to what the community's saying?" And make that recommendation to council. This is going to be, this presentation is very detailed, it's very thoughtful. We're going to take our time. We think it's a really important moment, so I hope that you'd be patient with us in hearing. There's a lot of information. We tried to cover it the best we could. We know that we can't, you know, we can't cover every single detail that we heard. We tried to do our best, and it's very detailed. The other thing, before I bring up the consultant team, I would, hopefully, we'll get through it, but there's probably no way to do questions during the presentation. I think it'd be, it's a pretty long presentation as it is. We probably, we probably stall out pretty bad if we did questions, so we're going to ask you to, I know it's going to be hard, but I'll try to hold the questions to the end. And then, finally, what, just to start, just to, so it's clear what we're asking for, we're really asking for recommendations to council, to the community engagement process. It was good, you know, we received it, and then, here's the initial bicycle network improvements, and we want to move forward. And the next step would be to further investigate those, and actually, in a detailed way. You know, some of these things are hard. There's removal of parking. Okay, well, how many parking, how many people who park in the parking that were removed? Who are those people? How many cars would that be? Is there an alternative parking? There's a lot of questions that we'll go away and try to answer. We're not going to answer them all here. We're just going to start to begin to say, "Is this the right thing we should go look for?" Any questions as we start about tonight? Right, you asked for that, didn't you? Do we, Peter, do we have a handout for the presentation? We'll get that, Peter. Yeah, we don't have a handout of the full presentation. We can email that, would that be a possibility for them to leave with that? Yeah, we'll have that to you before you leave. Any other questions?
Just then, later on, when we get to our comments and discussion, do we actually vote in today's hearing? Is this a discussion and comments? Or do we actually, Planning Commission and TCC taking votes on these recommendations?
That's a great question. So, there is a vote, there is a recommendation. We want, we want to, and we've got it written down in the presentation. We're, we're looking for a confirmation that the community engagement process was what we planned it to be, and that we're, these are the initial bicycle network improvements that we want to go forward and analyze and have included, go to the next step and have it included in the Bicycle Master Plan draft that you would then receive after the summer. So, that's a great question.
The idea isn't that we're going to rewrite the draft. The idea is, we look at it and determine whether it's ready to go forward to the council.
That's good.
So, it will require a vote, but to send it forward.
That's good. And then, because you're two committees, one thing to keep in mind is there will be two votes. So, I think, if there's no other questions, I think what I'll do is bring up Shannon Davis, and we'll get started with the presentation.
Wonderful, thank you, Rob. As Rob mentioned, my name is Shannon Davis. I'm a Senior Urban Designer at Melendres, the lead outreach and urban design firm for the Santa Barbara Bike Master Plan. We will be conducting this presentation together. Colin McCormick, who's a transportation planner from Farr and Peers, will take over about midway through the presentation and start to present some of the draft network facilities. But, so, what I want to do, just to start, really, is to introduce the team, and then also to say, as you know, we've been working on this plan since late December of 2014. In April of this year, Peter Brown from the Public Works Department came and presented to PCC and to TC individually to give an outline of the outreach effort and to move forward with the outreach effort, which we did. And since then, we've been working really earnestly on outreach and engagement from April to June of the past few months. And so, if you're looking at the project process slide, you know, today, we're here in early July. We plan to go to council at the end of this month, and then to move forward from August to October with the draft Bicycle Master Plan, and then to come back before the end of the year and submit the final Bicycle Master Plan. So, we are, we are looking at full completion before the end of this year. So, just a brief description of what we're going to talk about today. We will be going over the community engagement findings. So, there have been a great number of really interesting and rich data that we've pulled from the community that we will be going over. We will also be covering safety analysis finding and technical analysis findings as well. That really, those two things really then have informed this community-driven bicycle network. We will then also consider and discuss additional policy that will, in later phases of this project process, be very important to consider. So, we want to preface that here tonight with you. And then, in addition to that, we'll talk about next steps. And as Rob mentioned, we would like for PC and TCC to recommend for continued movement forward with the initial bicycle facilities as we present them later tonight. So, this slide really kind of summarizes the project process, if you will. If you were to distill the Bicycle Master Plan input formula into a very clear slide, this is what you'd see. It's a combination of a breakdown of community engagement, very creative community engagement process, in addition to technical analysis, and then taking that information and vetting it with the community and making sure that we're hearing and what we think our input is, is also correct, based on what the community thinks. So, that was part of the neighborhood summits that were held in May of this year. So, all of those elements together then equal this community-driven bicycle network map that's in front of you, these facilities that we will be going over in great detail tonight. So, as a reminder, and I'm sure many of you have seen what this screenshot shows on this left-hand side, there was a very robust public outreach process. Early on, in April this year, the project launched the Bicycle Master Plan website. On that website, there was an interactive map where participants were able to geolocate specific locations in the city of Santa Barbara and to tell us what key or problematic areas were, where problematic areas were, where there were issues. Just key transportation topics and bicycle topics really sparked a lot of conversation, and we'll talk about the details of that in a little bit. In addition to that, we also launched a Facebook project website. And so, again, this has really provided a number of opportunities for us to continue to engage with the community throughout this process. It's been, it's been a great process so far. So, this slide is really a summary of all of the touchpoints, all of the community engagement touchpoints that we've had to date. And it really shows a real strong excitement and energy around this particular plan. So, we had an online survey of that, for that survey, we had 1,440 responses, which is, of a city of this size, in honesty, that's very impressive. We were, we do this a lot, and we work with a lot of communities, and that number really blew us away. So, this is, this was really exciting for us. We were, we were happy to see that. In addition to that, we have a growing number of Facebook likes on our project page. We have 214, last time I checked. It's probably changing and consistently growing. We have 698 email addresses of people who took the survey and said that they wanted to stay involved, they wanted to hear more information about the project as it moved forward. So, we have that now entered in a database of interested community residents, which is great to blast out information, too. In addition to that, we had five neighborhood summits. We'll get into the detail of those summits in a little bit, but over 190 participants signed in to the neighborhood summits that were held between four days, along four days in mid to late May. In addition to that, there were 25 intercept surveys that were held over the period of a Saturday. And local Santa Barbara residents were interviewed and filmed regarding transportation issues, concerns throughout the city. And that will be included in a mini film that will be completed as a result of this process, a real kind of documentation of the outreach component of this plan. There were also over 400 participants on the interactive map, so there were kind of the seed comments, or the original comments, and then people commenting on top of those comments, which was really engaging and great to see. 143 attendees at neighborhood roadshows, which were essentially drop-ins at existing community organization meetings, and over 640 views of the project introductory video. So, again, these are big numbers. This is really exciting, exciting kind of start to the project process, and we were really happy to see these numbers just so early on in the project. So, to dive deep into the survey, and I'm going to try to be concise about it, because there is more information, detailed information, in your outreach packets, in the summary of all of the outreach. So, I'll be a little quick about the responses. But, again, 1,440 people responded to the survey. Of those respondents, 17% were students, 13% were business owners, and 18% were parents of students that currently attend a school in Santa Barbara. So, it's a nice cross-section of people responding to the survey, which is exactly what we wanted to see. In addition to that, another thing that we really wanted to know is who's responding to this particular survey. And this density map shows that we're really seeing a cross-section of people taking the survey throughout town. So, we asked, "What's the nearest intersection to where you live?", and this map is a result of that. Again, we wanted to make sure that we were hearing from people who lived in multiple neighborhoods, in different neighborhoods, and who had kind of unique ideas about transportation and the future of bicycling in the city. Again, this is, this is an incredible map. It was great to see this come out of this process. So, one of the fundamental questions we asked is, "What is your primary mode of transportation?" The idea here with this question, really, again, was to identify the fact that we were getting information from people who use a variety of modes to get around town. The majority of people that took the survey, 51%, said in the last seven days they used a car to get around town, most. 30% said that they used a bicycle. So, again, a nice, a nice cross-section of people responding to this survey. We asked, "Do you think Santa Barbara is a safe place to ride a bike?" The overwhelming majority of people said moderately. So, 59% of people said it's moderately safe. And we wanted to know why. What prohibits you most from riding a bicycle in Santa Barbara? Well, 38% of people said, "You know, I ride regularly already." A similar number, 36% of people said that it's too dangerous. There are fast-moving cars, and that's, that's the main prohibition for my riding in the city, which is interesting. And this is a point that kind of continues to come up in the survey, and we'll see that as a common thread throughout, throughout the survey results. This is a really interesting graphic. This question really got at the vision and the goal, the foundation setting for the plan, we thought. We asked, "Should it be a goal to accommodate more people to ride bikes for work and recreational trips?" And so, of all the people that responded to the survey, 91%, an overwhelming majority of people, said yes, this should be the goal of the plan. Now, we then took it one step further and kind of made a dynamic question out of it, and looked at people who said in the past seven days that they drove a vehicle as a majority of their modal trips, and still, 85% of people said yes, that should be a priority of the plan. So, this, this kind of speaks resoundingly to this question and to this foundational goal, I think, that has been set. In addition, we asked, "Why do you ride a bike?" The top three responses were exercise, convenience, and environment. I do want to state that you'll notice on these slides and in the slides that continue, the numbers don't equal 100%. Reason being was that respondents were able to give two, in some cases, three responses to the question. So, that's, that's what you're seeing, if you're adding those up in your head right now. We also asked, "What are your priorities for the Santa Barbara Bike Master Plan?" So, specific to this plan, what should the priorities be? The top two responses were to close gaps in the network and to improve existing facilities. So, again, this, this message kind of comes up repeatedly throughout this survey. We asked, "What types of bike facilities would you like to see more of in Santa Barbara?" The top three responses were buffered bike lanes, so a protected bike lane, a protected buffer bike lane, a protected bike lane with some sort of vertical protection, and then colored bike lanes. And so, those top three, 70, 65, and 53% responses to that question really all have one thing in common, is that they really support a heightened sense of safety, a heightened sense of security. And, and again, this is the thread that we're seeing even in this next question. "What are your transportation priorities for Santa Barbara as a whole?" So, kind of higher-level, transportation as a whole, what are the priorities? And again, it's safety for all road users. 71% of people responded to that question, saying it was safety. In addition, 67% said extend bike routes, and 58% said improve existing bike routes. So, so that was the survey. In addition to the survey, a number of roadshow outreach presentations were given. This was, there was a list of roadshow outreach potential participants that was vetted by TCC and PC and added to. And so, city staff sent out emails and notifications, and I think phone calls as well, to over 100 organizations in the city and said, "Do you want to find out more about the plan? We'll come to you. We'll come to your existing organizations, and we'll talk to you about the plan itself, how to stay involved." This is the list of the organizations that contacted us back and that we went to and presented information about the project plan itself. Again, realizing that not everyone can come to the summits, not everyone can, can use the online tools, and so, we wanted to bring it to them. So, hard copies of the survey were passed out, and then additional kind of dialogue and feedback happened at these particular events. So, in addition to that, the interactive map activity, which is detailed very specifically in your outreach packet, is online and available. We took comments through to June 5th. And so, really, people were able to go online and select from the list of indicators that are listed on the top right there. So, you know, maintain route as is, undesirable bike route, improved traffic facility or traffic flow needed, other. And people were able to specifically locate locations on the map where they either had traffic or bicycle concerns. And so, really quickly, this became a very dynamic tool. So, in addition to being able to kind of put your initial comment down, you were also able to then look at other comments and see what other people had said, or like them, disagree with them, or comment on top of them as well. So, again, it brought this dialogue to a totally, complete different dimension, and people were able to interact with each other on this platform as well and learn from each other. So, that, so that was great. And additionally, the reoccurring themes that came out of this map activity are summarized in your, in your packets. In addition to the survey, to the roadshow outreach, and to the interactive map, we also did technical analysis. We started hearing that, you know, we should really be considering key locations, destinations, trips potentially to schools and to parks. And so, we mapped those and then looked at facilities as they were existing and how they connected or did not connect to these key destinations. In addition to that, we looked at gaps in the network. On very preliminary kind of survey, a look at the survey, we noticed that that was, that was gaining traction. So, we mapped this as well and looked at the existing facilities, and then highlighted the gaps where they occurred in the bicycle network throughout town, and brought this to the neighborhood summits, just as kind of a reference. We also did a safety analysis, a safety summary. So, again, this was a multi-layered approach. We were looking at many different types of collisions between the years of 2004 and 2013. And this is the amalgamation of all of those collisions that had been reported. And so, what this shows really was, were some key takeaways. We saw, for example, one of the biggest takeaways is that there's a greater number of collisions downtown and on the east side. And perhaps that is an area of focus as we move forward. So, what we did was, we took those reference maps, those technical maps, and we distilled them for the neighborhood summits. And then, we had them as reference boards for people to look at, look at collision hotspots and things of that nature, as they were starting to think about bicycle facilities in the community. So, based on all of that input and based on the technical analysis, we then worked with city engineers, city staff, to come up with a draft bicycle network plan. And this was presented at the neighborhood summits, and completely, really, as the intention was really to just begin to talk about the potential for facilities. This wasn't, we presented it as something that was not, not set in stone. This was really just to start talking about the feasibility of potential network facilities in the city. And so, we encouraged people to cross things out, to change them, to add things, and to kind of speak openly about the potential for the future. So, we'll return to this slide in a second. But before that, I do want to talk about the five neighborhood summits. One was held, we held two on Saturday, May 16th, on the east side and west side. We offered those both in Spanish. We only needed to do one of them in Spanish, and the other one, we offered bilingual, bilingual service as well. And then, we had, on the 19th, 20th, on the 18th, 19th, and 20th, we had meetings in the Mesa, downtown and uptown. And the downtown, the downtown participation level was really impressive. This was, we think that this was really a catchment for a lot of neighbors that lived in multiple parts of town, because we started to have really in-depth conversations about, about facilities, not just specific to downtown. And it was really a robust and rich conversation, specifically at that meeting. And in addition to that, at all of the five neighborhood summits, we had really great conversations with, with the community moving forward. And this directly influenced, then, the network facility map that we'll be discussing. In addition to that, shortly after, about one week after the neighborhood summits, there was the Aliso's pop-up. City staff put that on with a great number of volunteers. Volunteers were stationed between Casique and Haley at eight intersections, and they were talking to people about a bicycle boulevard. This bicycle boulevard came out of the east side plan. And in addition to that, we talked about the potential for the bicycle boulevard on Aliso Street, and it gained traction during our east side discussion at that neighborhood summit. And so, we went ahead and put together this pop-up event. And staff and consultants, we were surprised that even people who, you know, were not necessarily familiar with the concept of a bicycle boulevard, were stopping at the stop signs and talking to us about why they thought this was such a great thing. "It was great for the community," they said, "and also just enhanced safety and security for themselves and for their children." This is an image of the diverter, a temporary diverter that was put up at Yanonali Street. And again, it was just, there was a lot of overwhelming support at this particular event. We were very happy with it. So, from all of that outreach that occurred, there were some salient points that came out of, out of the outreach. There were some key topics, and I want you to look at these icons, because they're going to continue to appear in the next set of slides. But the key takeaways were enhance safety for all road users. We heard that again and again. Close gaps in the network. Improve existing facilities. Create strong east-west connections. Create better connections to schools. Enhance safety at very particular intersections around town. And improve connections across the 101 freeway. So, again, we will return to each of these facilities. When we talk about the facilities map, we have, have made sure to consider these key takeaways for each of the facilities and make sure that they respond directly to what we heard as part of the outreach process. So, as I said, we'd come back to this slide. This was the slide that was presented at the neighborhood summits. And this is the slide we're presenting now. So, I'm going to toggle a little bit between them, so that you can see that they, they do change pretty drastically, based, directly based on input from the community. And so, at this point, I'll turn it over to Colin McCormick, who will walk us through the community-driven bicycle network facilities. And so, Colin, thank you.
Great, thank you, Shannon. So, as Shannon said, my name is Colin McCormick. I'm a transportation planner with Farr and Peers. So, kind of whereas Melendres was responsible for kind of assessing this kind of from a community standpoint, you know, getting out the, kind of the awareness about the plan and sort of finding what folks had to say, our role as transportation planners is now to look at some of these ideas and sort of see how they pencil out, sort of through some technical analyses. You know, and again, what are some of the trade-offs that may be present in the various facilities that the community has told us they really are interested in? And so, that's, that's kind of what we have here, is the community-driven bike network. Now, as I'm sure many of you know, there's a handful of key design challenges throughout Santa Barbara. There's sort of a historic street of, historic grid of fairly narrow streets, and there's competing users who are on those streets. Of course, there's motorists, bicyclists, people who walk, and then parking and transit, among other considerations. So, our goal throughout this all, which we developed with city staff, is to kind of come up with some solutions that can address all these goals in the outreach, again, which I'll reiterate, the safety for all travelers, the closing gaps in the bikeway network, high-quality bikeways, strengthening crosstown bikeways. Lastly, while balancing the needs of a variety of road users. And, you know, maybe this takes a variety of approaches. Maybe there's some shifting of bicycle traffic from streets, which are generally more kind of streets you want to preserve as auto priority, onto better streets that are more bike-friendly, more comfortable for that type of travel, and other things like avoiding on-street parking removal. So, while I'm on the topic of on-street park removal, I want to highlight that we're really only considering that option in a handful of locations, which are fairly strategic. To give you a few examples, there's about two blocks on Rancho Ria Street over by SBCC. There's about five blocks on Mitchell Torena, between Castillo and State. About two blocks on Haley, west of Chapala. And about one block on Castillo, over on Pedregosa and Mission. Another thing we're looking at is kind of the further study of road diets, where, you know, one lane of travel for autos is converted into oftentimes two bike lanes. And we're doing this really only where low auto volumes may permit the opportunity to do so. A good example, this might be Cabrillo Street, Cabrillo Boulevard, rather, east of Melpis. And so, these types of treatments, in addition to one-way couplets, which are, you know, a fairly common theme and use of treatment throughout the city, like we see on Bath and Castillo, are another option we're exploring. To give you a few examples of corridors where that might be prudent, from what we've heard and from what we've looked at, potentially Chino and San Andres over on the west side, and also maybe Olive and Laguna on the east side. And these are generally sort of recommended to provide bike lanes, again, keeping with our theme of minimizing trade-offs, while also preserving things like on-street parking, and in many cases, with the conversion to one-way. and in many cases with the conversion to one-way traffic, again, pending analysis, not adversely affecting auto flow. So, to kind of wrap up this overview here, what we're asking again tonight is direction to study all of these alternatives. We want to go into more specific analysis as we move forward in the next phases of our project, and also, of course, project-specific outreach, you know, going back and really drilling in at kind of a more acute level, individual projects to see what folks have to say. So, what I'm going to do next is kind of walk you through the Community Driven Bikeway Network here. And essentially, it kind of boils down to five key projects, which each have their own kind of subcomponents. Those five projects are the backbone, which you see here in green. That's really kind of the core and the spine of the whole network, where everything else builds off of. There's the Coast Route, which generally sort of spans from kind of the Mesa and all the way over to East Beach. There's closing a handful of key gaps in the uptown neighborhood, and then kind of turning back sort of more centrally and looking to both the west side and the east side. And as Shannon has mentioned earlier, as I'm walking through the presentation here, there's a handful of icons which kind of spell out at a high level exactly what some of the rationale and benefits are to these projects. So, first, I'm going to talk about the backbone facilities or the spine, depending on sort of what you want to call it. This is kind of the minimum network here that satisfies the goals in the outreach process, which again, were, you know, safety, really with an underscore there. Safety for all travelers, closing gaps in the bikeway network, high-quality bike facilities, and then stronger crosstown connectivity. And this entire route, this entire system would be involving green coloration. The goal of that being that it creates kind of a seamless network that is easy to follow, and it provides a great sort of framework across the entire city. And I should say also, there's several sections of this network, like most of State Street, portions of Mitchell-Torreana, and Haley, where they can be built without any modifications to the existing roadway network or auto capacity or parking, things like that. So, the way that the kind of the process is going to go here is that I'm going to walk you through each component of these five core projects and explain a little more about, you know, kind of what goes into them, what we heard, and what are some of the alternative options. The first one is State Street, which would essentially be a green bike lane all the way from out Sterns Wharf up into the Five Points neighborhood. So, really, you know, kind of cutting across the entire city. We see this as a really good opportunity to enhance safety for all users of the road with that green coloration. It's a way to develop more visibility for the bikeway to motorists, so that, you know, folks who are driving are aware that there's going to be bicyclists out there and to, you know, be cautious of that, and also improve bicycle wayfinding. So, if you're out there riding your bike, you can use this kind of a very visual cue here to help navigate the system. Now, I should mention, there's a gap of State Street, a portion, rather, between about Constance and De Lavina, where there aren't currently bike lanes. So, we've looked at a variety of options to address this. One would be, you know, continuing the bike facilities along State Street, and another option would explore De Lavina and Correo. I should say that both of these will require further analysis and, oh, I'm, Cabrillo, Castillo, and Chapala. I'm going to do it at least once. And so, that's something we're going to be looking at as we move forward here. You know, clearly, there are advantages and disadvantages to both options, and we look forward to kind of diving more far into that. So, the next one, we're starting to look here now at kind of crosstown routes, so getting back to that theme of kind of connectivity across town. So, the proposed idea we've heard here, the idea that the community has been telling us they want to see, is kind of this bike-friendly street on the two western and eastern extremities of Mitchell-Torreana, where, you know, it's sort of more residential, there's lower traffic volumes, and it's kind of more of a neighborhood-y feel, where things like bike-friendly treatments, which are shared lane markings, signage, and safety improvements, will really strengthen those to great kind of neighborhood-centric bike facilities. And then, at the core of this route, between about Chino and State Street, we're looking into the option of transferring the on-street parking to green bike lanes. And now, the reasons we want to consider that option are really kind of multiple. This is already a route that has bike lanes that go over the 101 freeway, and it's sort of really a great corridor, that there's no on-ramps at that area or off-ramps that kind of, you know, can have high-speed traffic leading to the freeway. It's a really easy and visible route across town. You know, some of the other options to get across the 101 freeway, like the overpasses, it can be somewhat circuitous or after dark, you know, oftentimes don't have as ample lighting. So, this really is kind of a clear-cut and very visible route, which a lot of folks are already using to get across town. And so, these, I think, handful of factors I've just listed here make this a really strong candidate for the green treatment and as being part of this spine network. And also, I should say, just so I kind of, you know, in considering all the options we have and trying to really develop a balanced network of transportation options, focusing bicyclists onto Mitchell-Torreana allows streets like Correo to maintain more of an auto focus as folks are getting off the freeway there. So, the next facility we're going to look at is on Cota Street. This is, again, another kind of crosstown option. One of the core themes we've been hearing out of our planning process and also prior efforts like the east side mobility plan, was that there needs to be stronger linkages between the east side and downtown and vice versa. So, whereas there's already a really popular bike lane that gets folks from downtown over to the east side, there isn't as good of an opportunity to get back. And so, what we're looking at here is exploring the possibility of removing some of the parking on Cota Street and turning it into a westbound green bike lane, you know, sort of honoring that request of creating a linkage both, you know, to and from the east side. We've looked at Cota because it's sort of a generally low-traffic, kind of low-stress street, and, you know, a lot of folks are already biking out there now. So, it seems like it could be a great candidate for that. Again, you know, I want to really kind of emphasize that we'll be studying these things kind of in further detail as we move forward. So, again, as I mentioned, Haley Street has really emerged as a popular bicycle street kind of from downtown to the east side there. And kind of in owning to that, in sort of in keeping with this usage that we're seeing of bicyclists, we want to find ways to enhance that facility. And a key way to do that is to add the green coloration, which really can kind of dial up the safety and sort of the visibility of bicycling to the next level. And since it's already sort of such a core route across town, one of the additional components we're looking at is extending that corridor further west, about two blocks of De Lavina, and in that case, swapping the parking there for a eastbound bike lane. Okay, so that was the, that wraps up the core of the spine grouping of facilities. Again, that backbone kind of really cutting across town. The next group we're looking at here is coastal connections. This kind of encompasses the Mesa area and portions along the waterfront there, heading out to East Beach. There's a handful of really important projects here that folks told us could really strengthen local and even regional connectivity in the bikeway network. So, I'm going to skip ahead to the next slide here. And the first project that we're looking at is a multi-use path, I should say, generally running along Modoc Road and then Las Pecitas. So, essentially going from, for those of you who biker, you know, get out and walk and run, where the Oberneur Trail ends on the west side of town, and heading down generally in the southern direction towards Hendry's Beach. And, you know, this has really been kind of an interesting project in that it's already something that's been identified in the city's capital improvement program, and its parallel track is sort of the way it's been developed. So, it's something, you'll notice there's a dash symbology there. I should use this opportunity to mention, there's a handful of projects that have that symbology that are kind of being pursued under other umbrellas that are kind of already in the works. So, this is one of those. And, you know, it really represents a great opportunity here to get, you know, folks from all ages, they like to say, eight to 80 in our profession, you know, who can use this facility to recreate, to ride with their kids, to commute. So, you know, really, really interesting opportunity here, we see. So, next up is sort of a more short-term kind of, I guess, investment in that corridor that can be done on a shorter term and a more near-term framework. So, that's Las Pecitas Boulevard. It's kind of upgrading the bike lanes that are already out there. As I'm sure a lot of you folks, you know, it's a really key corridor across town. Oftentimes, traffic moves fairly fast on this linkage. And so, what this plan is to do here, what we've been hearing is to, again, kind of increase safety by adding a buffer between faster-moving traffic and slower bicyclists. This is done with the buffered bike lanes I just mentioned. Again, really a very popular treatment in our survey outreach. You know, I think 70% of folks said they really liked these type of facilities. And the way this would work is that a little bit of excess width that currently exists in the auto travel lanes can be restriped as a buffer and used to create this important safety addition. And this, again, is sort of a near-term way of providing a linkage and enhanced strengthened facility along this corridor. And so, that actually dovetails very nicely into the next element of this project, which is Cliff Drive. Now, the city is already looking into closing some bikeway gaps that exist along this corridor and adding to similar to buffered bike lanes. However, given, you know, the central role of Cliff in the regional bikeway network, a lot of folks, you know, I see, I used to live in Santa Barbara, and I would ride home this way, you know, folks out walking their dogs and just, you know, kind of riding with their kids. So, kind of really an important linkage here. So, we see it, you know, there being an opportunity to strengthen this, so that whereas in the near term, bike lanes will be prudent and filling those gaps, in the long term, I think one of the things that has been identified is to maybe, what if there's a way to enhance that, you know, to get a really high-quality facility? And this is one of the places where we can look into that and explore something like more of a dedicated path, where there would be actual physical separation between bicyclists and motor traffic. And again, this will be done by taking the space that's either currently a bike lane or kind of in the pipeline to do so in the near term and converting that to a path. So, I want to take a moment to pause here and look back on the types of facilities that we heard were important to those who filled out the survey, to Santa Barbara residents. And again, you know, we had overwhelming support for people telling us that, hey, we want to see buffered bike lanes, we want to see protected bike lanes where there's an actual physical separation, and we want to see green bike lanes. So, I just sort of want to look back on the network here. This is our kind of, our golden opportunity to do that. This is the meat, or this is the tofu, if you will, for the vegetarians out there of our network, wherein we can really kind of make those things happen and do so in ways that create a balanced network of the transportation network, that don't really involve a whole lot of trade-offs and modifications to the roadway system. So, I'm going to keep moving forward here with the coastal projects. The next one up is, it's kind of closing the gap in the beach path here. I recognize I'm moving at, you know, a million miles an hour here, so I hope this is all getting through. Again, there's the map if anyone needs to reference it. But what this project is looking at here is the section of the beach path between about the Mesa and kind of the harbor, right around Hendry's Beach, or Lebeder Beach, where there's currently a parking lot that has, it's the only gap in the otherwise continuous beach path from the Mesa over to East Beach and onto the Bird Refuge. And so, we're looking at opportunities to create, you know, a linkage to close this gap in along what's really a popular route for recreation for a lot of tourists here. And I should say that, you know, the design will be done in a way that, you know, kind of minimizes disruptions to the existing parking in that area. Again, something we'll be looking at in the further steps of our process. Okay, and so, the final section here is, again, moving kind of from the west to the east, looking at Cabrillo Boulevard. Now, one of the things that we heard a lot from in our outreach process was that there's currently a bike lane that precedes westbound on Cabrillo. However, there's no eastbound alternative, and a lot of folks, you know, who bicycle, were saying that they don't like to use the path because it can oftentimes be a fairly slow-moving bikeway, or a lot of folks walking out there. And so, you know, I think one of our goals was to look at the variety of different cycling types out there and try to make a network that responds to all of that, while at the same time, you know, responding to the broader needs of transportation. This is, you know, a very tourist-rich area. There's extreme demand for parking in this neighborhood and for maintaining, you know, a sufficient level of auto capacity. So, a way that we see to kind of meet as many of those needs as we can is through the use of what we're kind of calling Green Back Sherrows. So, there are shared lane marking, which is, again, the bicyclist symbol with kind of those two chevrons, kind of, you know, indicating to everyone, this is a shared lane, but also with a more high-visibility green backing to it. So, it's kind of, it's playing off of the green network that we've proposed, that we're hearing, you know, folks want to see as the spine of the network, and using that kind of in a more acute treatment to kind of bring that green coverage and that familiarity to locations where we can't get a full bike lane. Now, east of Milpiss, the traffic tends to die off a little bit more. There's not as many folks who are driving out there. So, we see that as maybe being an opportunity for study of taking a travel lane and sort of, you know, partitioning that into two bike lanes, moving in both directions. So, what you would ultimately have along this corridor is a path for those, you know, who want to get on those sort of four-wheeled Sari bikes and just kind of ride really slow, and also for folks who want to move at a faster pace, building a really, you know, kind of balanced and all-encompassing network here for transportation. Oops, what do we have here? What did I do? Okay, so, we've kind of come to a close on the first two segments. We're going to move across town here up to kind of the uptown, upper state area. And the first component of this is looking at a corridor which is sort of, I guess it's signed officially as the Foothill Route, but generally, it's an alternative to State Street that kind of wiggles through some neighborhood streets there. And it's a great route. You know, again, I used to ride it a lot when I was going to work, but it's a little bit hard to follow. So, we want to take that same treatment of the Green Back Sherrows that we just looked at in the last project and apply them here to kind of increase visibility and heighten safety by saying to everyone, this is a route that we're going to see bikes and cars on, so we need to, you know, kind of consider it accordingly. And I should say also that, you know, a lot of traffic tends to queue southbound on Las Pecitas as it's waiting at the State Street intersection. So, part of this project would also be looking at a treatment to sort of get bikes safely across that intersection there of where the Foothill Route bisects Las Pecitas. Okay, and so, next up is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm one slide behind us. All right, here we go. So, we're looking here at the very west end of town, kind of where State Street, the 101, and Caiarial all come together in what is ultimately a fairly complex junction of roads. And one of the overwhelming requests we heard through the bicycle plan outreach process was to do something to improve safety here. And so, it's, there's a lot of factors that go into this. You know, it's a complex intersection. There's, you know, a variety of competing users that want to get through this area. And one of the things we're looking at is sort of, is finding ways to color the bikeway network, so adding that green coloration again, and also exploring possibilities for maybe reconfiguring how the lanes are laid out to kind of optimize the space for all users and better delineate that space, I should say. You know, it's so important to think that separating autos and bikes can reduce the conflicts and really make the road safer for all users. And also, this can add benefits for bicycle wayfinding, again, you know, helping to signpost the route where folks need to go as they're riding through this complex junction. And kind of moving again here a little further south, one of the things that we heard a lot of was that the people really were familiar with and liked this concept of the one-way couplet, where you have two parallel streets with one traffic moving entirely in one direction, the other street moving in the other direction. You see it a lot across town. And folks at our outreach said they wanted more of that. So, one of the things we looked at kind of off the bat was, is there a way to extend that couplet further along Bath and Castillo up towards Cottage Hospital? And so, that will be done by converting those currently two-way streets to one-way operation and adding a bike lane each direction. Now, a couplet has a variety of advantages, kind of from a traffic engineering perspective, in that you can add bike lanes, first of all, and probably most importantly, without moving parking, and also, you know, given the proper configuration, without really adversely affecting traffic operations. Now, clearly, any modifications that we are looking at here will be tested. You know, we want to look at things like turning movements and, you know, intersection impacts, signal timing, and also, we'll run the city's traffic model with these projects in place to see how that kind of affects the network as a whole. And those will be things that we present as we're moving forward in our process, along with sort of more acute kind of project-specific outreach that we'll hear what folks who maybe who live on this corridor or work in this area have to say about the project. And so, the next project here is, again, another east-west linkage. One of the things that we heard a lot of in our process was that people really were interested in Mission Street as a good bike corridor and that it runs kind of from the upper east, you know, over towards Modoc Street, which is a popular bike route leading out west towards UCSB. However, this is also an extremely important auto route, and at the moment, the only way to accommodate bicyclists will be to widen the road, which is cost prohibitive. So, we wanted to look at kind of alternatives that accomplish the same goal while minimizing sort of disruptions to the overall transportation system. And a really, I think, promising opportunity is a block south on Pedregosa, which is a very, you know, low-volume, kind of low-stress neighborhood street where a bike boulevard-type treatment could be established. And for those of you who aren't familiar, that kind of involves, you know, a shared route where there's signage that tells folks it's a bike route. There's on-the-road striping markings indicating it again as a bike route, and also some intersection treatments that can help people, you know, kind of get through more high-traffic intersections. And then, so that would get you across town. But of course, since we are a block south of Mission, which is identified as the kind of the priority route, there's a linkage. There's a one-block section of Castillo where there would be a contra-flow bike lane extending north. So, that means the bike lane would run in the opposite direction of traffic, would have a certain amount of buffering from it. It's actually a fairly commonly-used treatment in other cities across the country. So, we'd be applying that concept in this sort of location where it really could be warranted. And again, you know, we'll see how that impacts the intersections there, being that it is so close to the freeway. We want to understand, you know, what type of ramifications this type of modification would entail. Okay, so, next up, we're at the second to the last project here. This is over on the west side, and we're looking at kind of a handful of connections here that can generally move folks in a north-south direction. The first project up is this handful of shared routes, which are really less of a project in and of themselves, less of a component and more of a connection. Modoc is a very popular bicycle route, you know, leading out towards Galida and to UCSB. However, where it enters downtown, or the, I should say, Santa Barbara, it doesn't really have much of a direction where it goes. So, this would move folks who are riding on that route kind of two blocks over to a handful of projects which I'm going to describe next here. So, first up of those is the, kind of this one-way couplet idea being applied to San Andres and Chino Streets, where, again, you would take those two streets and they would be modified in such a way that they be modified in such a way that they would be one-way operation in one direction and one way in the other direction, adding that bike lane, not removing parking, and, you know, generally speaking, probably not adversely affecting traffic impacts. This was something which a lot of folks in the neighborhood had told us they liked, both in this summit and in the downtown summit, where we heard, you know, boy, you did this over on Bath and Castillo, it would be great if we had this in our neighborhood. So kind of exploring that opportunity here as we move forward. And then kind of rounding out this project is, I sort of affectionately call this the west-side wiggle, but we're not going to actually call it that. It's a handful of kind of bike routes that get you south of the area there, and kind of down towards SBCC and the beach. So the first handful of the projects here, and there's a lot of names, but San Andres and Wentworth are the, kind of, the key north-south routes, would be following that bike-friendly treatment with the, you know, kind of some intersection safety treatments, shared lanes, and signage. And then on Rancho Ria, we're exploring the possibility where, you know, traffic tends to pick up a little bit of a bike lane in one direction, which would come in exchange for some parking removal on one side, but, you know, trying to keep with the theme of minimizing those disruptions to parking, maintaining the parking on the other side of the street. Okay, and so the last set of projects here, the last project, kind of, what we're calling Project Five, is the east-side connection. Again, it's made up of a handful of parts here. And the first of those follows Laguna and Olive Streets, and it's, we're looking at opportunities for a bike-friendly street, you know, bike lanes, a handful of options. The first one, I'll say, is sort of, again, continuing this idea of the one-way couplet, where they could potentially be converted to one-way operation, similar to we've seen on Bath and Castillo and over on the west side. Or another opportunity would be to just have shared lane markings on those two streets. Or a final opportunity would be to turn one of the streets and make it more of kind of a neighborhood-serving bike boulevard. And we'll be exploring all those options as we move forward. And as Shannon mentioned earlier, Elise Soos is another candidate for a bike boulevard. Recently, it was sort of demonstrated to the community, and it was interesting just how much support, I think, there was, not just from bicyclists and folks who are, you know, kind of used to this, but from neighbors and from people who are driving through there, who really saw the benefits that this could bring to the neighborhood, to calm it down and, you know, make it more of a livable environment, where there aren't cars speeding through, and where, you know, people aren't using it as an alternative to Milpiss to cut through the neighborhood. And in doing so, it prioritizes Milpiss as sort of this, you know, commercial corridor, really a backbone of the east side, you know, where a lot of buses are and a lot of folks are driving through there. So kind of balancing those different options. And moving forward here, there's about two kind of subprojects left, just to give you a heads-up of where we're at. So the first one we're looking at here is Casique, kind of an east-west corridor. This, again, was identified in prior planning efforts in the east-side mobility plan. And what the objective here is to do is to create a bike-friendly street along, in many ways, what could be considered an ideal corridor for that. It cuts underneath the 101 on somewhat of a lightly-used road, and it can get you from the east side all the way down to the beach. So it's kind of an ideal project in this nature. It's also sort of in progress on one of these separate tracks. Again, it has that dash symbology there. And it's interesting in that it makes use of a previously redevelopment-agency-owned parcel between Quarantina and Caillasseza Chavez, to kind of round out this connection and get you all the way across there. Okay, and last, one of the, one of the kind of the important missing links in the, I would say, the county-wide bikeway network is this small section here. I know it seems fairly minimal, but, you know, currently, it's very easy to get pretty much all the way down to Montecito. There's bike routes, there's bike lanes on roads like Old Coast. However, they let out just a little bit sort of east of here, and there's no real linkages as you get into downtown. I can remember numerous times trying to bike up from Montecito or points south and just, you know, scratching my head where I didn't know where to go from there. So we initially looked at opportunities to kind of, you know, kind of close this gap, and things that we were hearing in the community, which generally involved using Salinas Street, and then jogging over to something like Casique. However, when we looked at it a little more closely, we sort of realized there's a lot of fast-moving traffic that's getting off of the freeway here, and, you know, it's a fairly constrained right-of-way, and that taking things away might not be the best opportunity in this area. So we looked to kind of see what other options might present themselves. And in doing so, you know, we see that there's these great streets that have very little traffic, very close to them, where we can create really good, high-quality bike facilities, the bike boulevard treatment, which, you know, is used popularly in a lot of other cities in California, like Berkeley and San Luis Obispo, and applying it here along Canada or Canada Street, Pitos, and Park Place, kind of as an alternate linkage in this area, that kind of tends to balance the different competing priorities in a better way. So what we're, again, looking at here is the entire network. This is sort of the spine, and all the pieces that have been layered on top of that. And this network, you know, it was driven out of a community process. This is, you know, by and large, what folks told us they wanted. And so, you know, it establishes this handful of goals of safety for everyone who's out there on the streets, you know, closing gaps in the bikeway network, you know, strengthening crosstown connections, and really, you know, kind of achieving the various goals that we were tasked to do as a consultant team here. You know, the city told us they wanted a bike plan, and this is kind of what we've been hearing. And it does so, you know, while minimizing reductions to other types of traffic movement, either parking or lane reductions, and things like that. You know, it's kind of strategically considering all of our options and balancing those needs. So again, I want to reiterate, again, we're not asking to approve this network so much as we're asking for direction to proceed forward, and to go into further, more acute analysis, where we can really look into kind of the nuts and bolts of individual projects, which will then be followed by an extensive outreach project just for those projects as they're moving forward, before they hit any type of design or construction. So that summarizes the entire network there. There's some other kind of higher-level considerations that will go into a bike plan. These are, in many cases, mandated by the state as part of their active transportation guidance. It means that we look at things like enforcement, you know, is everyone using the road in a safe and sort of legal manner? Education, you know, just letting folks know that there's bikes out there, letting bicyclists know how to interact with drivers safely, looking more specifically at intersection improvements. We talked about one earlier at, you know, the 101, Caiariall and State, but other locations across town where maybe there's sort of more point-specific opportunities for improving things. Also bicycle parking, you know, clearly every trip on a bike has to end somewhere, and so we need to have safe facilities to lock those bikes up. And lastly, one which is really interesting, which really could set Santa Barbara kind of on a stage of a lot of the major cities of the United States, is bike share. The notion of, you know, kind of having this communal pool of bicycles which are rented for short trips, different than like a beach rental, which you might see already in town, but more kind of with the idea of, you know, using it for short trips, like on your lunch break, or kind of, you know, getting from the bus to where you work, and exploring how that could fit in Santa Barbara. So I'm going to conclude here with a little bit about our process, and then, lastly, some ways you can stay in touch as we move forward. So today, we've been presenting to these various committees. Later this month, we're going to go in front of the city council and do a similar presentation, again, talking about our process and what has kind of risen to the top here. And then after that, we'll proceed into actually kind of developing the plan itself, you know, kind of summarizing that. There'll be a very short document which kind of extols the entire project, you know, kind of in more of a glossy, kind of easy-to-read format, and also a documentary, a video documentary, which will, you know, kind of show all the steps we've taken along the way. And then, so if any of you want to stay in touch as the project moves forward, there's two really good ways to do that. First is the project website, which we've been using fairly extensively. And second, for those of you, I'm not on Facebook, but those of you who are, we have a Facebook page where you can come like the project. So thank you so much for your time. I'm going to turn it back over to the city here.
Thank you so much. And before you, we're going to be available, the whole team is going to be available for questions, and I want to also note that Derek Bailey is here, our esteemed traffic engineer, and he was instrumental in being a team member. I also want to note that Jessica Grant is here in second row. She was also instrumental, and of course, Peter Brown managing this project with us. So I just want to, before you get peppered with questions, I just want to say that this team has been wonderful to work with, and you guys, not that they didn't do it for free, but they did a very excellent job, and it's been a very enjoyable experience to see excellent work coming from the private industry for Santa Barbara, so.
Okay, does anyone on the committee or the commission have questions for staff or for the consultants? Mr. Jordan?
So Rob, really, I'm just confused about that timeline. If the, if the goal tonight is to ask for direction to study, but it's not coming back with results of that direction for more consideration before a final plan is presented to everybody, how does that work? Like, for example, tonight's the first night we saw details on lots of parking. That wasn't part of the staff report. I heard four streets, and then I heard a fifth street added. I don't know the number, I don't particularly know the blocks yet, what those blocks look like, and that, for me, is a big consideration. But if you look at that timeline, all that's going to happen is I'm going to see a final report with somebody's results of study without input on that study. So could you, can you tell me how that's going to work, or why I should feel good about that?
Yes, Commissioner Jordan. So it's really, really, probably, you know, the final bike plan is really not final till council's done, so it's really what you're going to get is a draft. And we'll go over what we found out, and what are the details of each thing to, as much as you'd like, at that time. And if we're not at the finish line and realize that, you know, there could be more iterations of that. This meeting is really important, perhaps the most important meeting, because we do want you to ask the questions, we do want to spend time and see what, you know, if there's questions of why do you pick this, why is that, what does that look like, and get to the details so that you're familiar with at least what we're exploring and what we're moving forward. And then, quite frankly, if there's something you say, no, you know, you missed this, I want to see this, or we don't like that, that's a really good thing to hear at this point. We don't want to waste time spending, we don't want to waste time chasing something that's not real, or that we haven't thought of.
Other questions here? Mr. Jordan?
Thank you for the presentation, and well-thought-out, both from design and traffic standpoint. As far as the survey itself, one thing that I just want to make sure is considered in your final analysis of the intricacies of the layout, is thankfully, Cota Haley, looks like we have a cross-corridors going on, and you're really working on that. I think looking at where future development, redevelopment is envisioned in the city, that's one of the spots, also Milpiss, and also Upper State Street. This is where, we call it the overlay or higher-density projects are being experimented with for rentals, likely younger occupants and younger residents, likely workers, we think, and likely a lot of bike utilization. And all of these projects have a requirement where covered bike parking is provided for all of the residents of these new facilities. So I think, just making sure on where people that aren't part of the survey now, but are going to be here in the future, both accessed east and west, and also north and south, because that's where a lot of jobs are going to be that are going to be very convenient to get through, both, say, the CM Zone and the M1 Zone, light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing, other uses. The second item are visitors, that the clarity, especially where the pinch point's going to be at Lower State Street with all the activities and hotels, that the markings and the education are available to visitors, which probably are going to become more of a peak use as we go forward, especially with the new hotels, and just increase in visitors that are coming to Santa Barbara to enjoy it. So part of your education may be at the, maybe the hotel level, you know, at the bike rental level. And I don't know if you got any input from them as far as your survey is feedback, let's say, from the bicycle rental places, you know, what type of issues they have with the visitors, or confusion that the visitors have. I don't know if you included them in the survey, or maybe just to double-check with them as you complete your survey. And then going forwards, continuing education and continued feedback from visitors, which are going to have a great use, and also education so they know maybe how to get around these pinch points. Calle Cesar Chavez, or other ways to get around town, whether not necessarily bogged up in State Street, or trying to get under the underpass at Garden. So those would be the two. Future workers, future residents, and visitors, making sure we're considering them as well. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? And again, this is an opportunity for us on the commission and the committee to ask questions of staff and the consultants before we open it up to public comment, and then we'll come back to our group for discussion, so. Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Boj. I sort of have a top-line question, just to use our time efficiently and effectively this evening, and I think some of my colleagues are getting at that same question. We have on pages three and four of our staff report 24 bullets that describe various recommended improvements. That's a lot for us to vet this evening, it will take a long time. At the same time, I'm trying to understand when it would be appropriate for us to give you feedback. Are we looking at sort of general goalpost directional issues? Because I know, I can sense the Planning Commission would like to delve pretty deep, or some commissioners would, and so we want to make good use of everybody's time and ask those questions when appropriate. Mr. Dayton, maybe, I don't know if you have any thoughts regarding that?
Well, Commissioner Schwartz, you know, it is a big plan, and there's a lot to cover. There's different ways to go about it. We're not exactly sure how, you know, interested you're going to be, and if you're very interested, we can, you know, we can go into the details. I think it might be useful to focus, there was a point in which Colin paused in the presentation and said, hey, you know, this is kind of the backbone, you know, it has the green and then the coastal parts. You know, maybe it would be helpful to focus on that first, and see how far we go, and then maybe, after we've done that, see how much time there is left, and then get into the things that are maybe fleshing out the system more, because what we're hearing from the consultants is that this, and we've actually heard it, that city council focused the riders, we heard it in the engagement process, focused the riders into certain routes. Of course, you can't, you know, prohibit people from riding other places, but this backbone represents that attempt to do that. So maybe that's where you want to start your focusing, your comments, and hear about that kind of fundamental system first.
Well, I'll just ask one more question, then I know we want to move on, including public comment. For example, when I look at this list of 24 items, again, pages three and four of our staff report, a question for me that comes to mind, and we deal with this on our capital improvement project discussions, the Planning Commission, I know council does the same. In terms of prioritizing, and there will be prioritization, obviously, is that off the table for the Planning Commission to consider? Do you want any feedback about that? Because I know, you know, as we never do, we never implement everything equally. We have considerations regarding timing and financing and all of that, feasibility, there are several references to, I think it's called struc, here it is, not structural feasibility, there's another term, I'm sure Mr. Bailey could comment, you know, engineering feasibility, et cetera. So I'm still trying to understand really the scope for the Planning Commission this evening, and going forward as to what kind of feedback you want, or is even appropriate. We could go as broad and deep as you know we can, and the Planning Commission does sometimes, so it would just be helpful, again, using everybody's time wisely. Thank you.
Okay, definitely, everything on this map is feasible. We've weeded out, we've taken away things, we didn't even recommend things that weren't feasible. I think you'll notice that the community asked for much more than we could provide, particularly in terms of the number-one facility, I think it was Bufford Lanes, we can't do that, but I think two locations, and then off-street facilities, and we can't do that. So green lanes was the number three. So I think we want, you know, it's going to be feasible, everything on this map is feasible. I think what you, your role is to say, is, you know, is this, judging from the summary report and the community engagement, is this the right, is this the right fit? If the foot is a community, is this the right shoe that fits what they're saying? I'm sorry for that analogy, I'm not sure that's the best one, should have been a bicycle analogy. That's what we want you to gauge. But if there is something you don't understand, we want you to ask a question to find that out.
Okay, lastly, is there, I may have mentioned this to you right before the meeting, there are a lot of terms here that are very familiar to transportation professionals, and probably staff, but probably not both the general public and even perhaps some decision-makers in the city. So again, between these two pages, I'm wondering if you have a glossary of terms anywhere in the rest of the packet that will go to the review boards as well as to council, so that it's very clear specifically what we're talking about, especially at council, when they're looking to make some final decisions. And I can later on, or separately, an email to you, I can call out, I have them identified, what these questionable terms, not questionable, but terms to be identified, yeah.
Yeah, we can put that together. We don't have, that does not exist yet. That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Rob, you brought up about the backbone as it being a place to start focusing on, and I do have a question that popped up during a review of this, and that is... and I do have a question that popped up during a review of this, and that is the east-west couplet that you talk about on Haley and Cota. Cota being a two-way street, why would we choose Cota as opposed to Gutierrez, which is one-way traffic, so that all the traffic would be flowing both auto and bicycles in the same direction?
I'm going to ask-
Is there some reason that mitigated to choosing Cota?
Absolutely. I'm going to ask Peter Brown of our staff to try to attempt to answer that and then possibly Colin after that.
Thank you for that question. The main reason that we looked at Cota was- Was for the near-term feasibility. I do believe that in your packet, we also are including Gutierrez, which you're correct, that's a one-way couplet partner. However, because we almost need to rebuild the roadway on Gutierrez, we're going to need to seek outside funding. That may, to get back to Commissioner Schwartz's comment in terms of priorities, we're almost looking at it more in terms of short-term projects and long-term projects. Gutierrez may make the long-term list. Cota would be easier to do in the near term. So that's kind of the short answer on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering how much we know about how much traffic there, bicycle traffic there is in these different locations? Do we, is the representation of where most of the accidents are, is because that's where most of the bicycles are? It seems to me we would need to know that that should be something that we take into consideration, you know, where the bicycle traffic is.
That's correct. That is a great question. And I think one of the, one of the things that we're looking at presently is ridership for commute, and we have pretty good data on that. We don't know exactly where they go around town, but we've recently purchased a data set, an open data set from a company that a lot of cyclists, maybe I would guess a third of cyclists in town are using right now. And that does show us a map of where everybody's riding. That company's called Strava. So, you know, we have some tools that we can use. And when we look at the Strava maps of where the routes are, State Street lights up, surprisingly Mission, under 101, lights up, the Bath-Castillo Couplet, Cabrillo Boulevard, it's a really nice snapshot, and I may pull it up for you all if you'd like, in a little bit, to see where people are riding in town. So we're definitely using that as a tool to develop a network.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Ms. Pujo?
Thanks. I'm taking a little elevated view here for a second to the overall project. So my understanding is that a draft will be returning to the TCC and Planning Commission, ultimately to the City Council, maybe sometime later this year, something like that. And that's fine, but I do want to bring up that I feel it's going to be very important that we take this one component that we've been working so diligently on now with the actual physical network plan and make sure it fits well and that we don't forget the rest of the context of the bicycle master plan update. And so I guess I'm just asking that, when that does come back to us, will there be, I assume, changes and updates to the information in the rest of the bicycle master plan from 1998? And I don't know if there'll be any policy additions and references and things like that, that I would like to see that those be very clearly shown and reasoned out so that we can have that discussion as well as the actual physical network plan. And also, I noticed in the 1998 plan, it seems to me that we are proposing something now that is much more of a clearer picture of where we want the bicycle network to go and what it will ultimately be. I think there's a lot more comprehensiveness in the actual physical design of the network itself in this particular proposal thus far, at least from what I can gather from that, and I think that's a, that's a good thing. And so I imagine there'll be, you know, like some of this information will actually become part of the bicycle master plan, right along with the, with the maps and the, and the, you know, basically the goal of what we're trying to achieve, like a maybe written description of what this plan is trying to do. So I look forward to that. On the timeline for the overall project and in getting there, I hope that there is sufficient public comment time as well for that portion of it. And so I think if that is the case and if there is a good, healthy amount of public review time as well for that portion of it, that may get to some of the flushing out of these needs. And so I'm okay with that kind of proposal, as long as there is a good amount of public comment time attached to it. So that's just one thing that I wanted to say there. And then also, on the physical plan itself, the network you've presented today, in my reading through the staff report materials and the website information and some of the hotspots, that interactive map where, you know, some of the more difficult streets to traverse were brought up and whatnot, it just, there, it might not have caught all of them, but there were some that popped out to me, and I think you've mentioned some of them, Mission Street is one. Milpiss Street, I don't know if we talked about specifically today, but certainly you addressed the east side. Las Bacitas, you addressed, but I'm not sure, I guess I would like a little information on how getting from, you know, the whole MODOC through Las Bacitas to downtown, I mean, do you feel like this proposal resolves that issue as best as we can? I would like a little more information on that. I would like to just hear and confirm that you feel this plan that you have come up for the east side really does kind of create an alternative to some of the comments and things that were made about the importance of Milpiss Street and bicycle needs there. The Mission, the Mission Street one, I think you've done a great job resolving, I can see that pretty clearly from what you've presented. And then one other thing, like a little bit more information on is, I understand the green lane up State Street, and it seems pretty like a logical selection to me, but there were comments about some of the intersection issues, particularly Alamar and State. And I would like to know how that gets resolved if a green lane is put through on that section. And to me, it's not a question of whether or not you propose the green lane on State Street, but making sure that all of those other kind of sticky points are also addressed along with it. And along with that, I had a question about pedestrians, because where you have green lanes and where you have, what do you, Bufford, were there Bufford lanes, is that what you called them? How do you deal with pedestrian crossings in those locations that will then tend to be even more popular bike routes than now? I mean, is there a system for basically the pedestrians also crossing? And once again, you know, looking at Alamar and State Street as an example, because it's a huge wide intersection, one of the widest in the city, I think. It's already difficult to, for pedestrians to cross and it's one part of the safe routes to school, because the schools are on one side of the street and the half the district for this, for Peabody School is on the other side of State Street. So how do you attend to those needs as you work further to refine this plan?
Okay. That's about, I think it's, I count, I think, five questions.
I got six.
Okay. So we're going to try to tag this. So the first question about the rest of the bicycle master plan, we're certainly going to have policy and other language. You heard Colin talk about bike share enforcement policies, educational policies, bicycle parking, that kind of thing. So that will also come with the draft plan. So we're going to have that. And then, do you want to talk about the next question about, not State Street, but-
The MODOC connection to downtown.
MODOC area, take the MODOC area.
Okay. So, and Commissioner Pujo wisely asked for an existing network map as well as the proposed network. So if you turn your attention to the existing network map, I think that's a good place to consider the green line that basically connects MODOC over towards Oak Park. That's an existing bridge that's not really well-known, but by those who know it, use it. So what we're looking to do along Pueblo Street, and maybe even with the extension of the Bath-Castillo Couplet system, is allow folks that want to connect to the middle of town or State Street to have a safe way to do that through an enhancement on Pueblo and the extension of the Bath-Castillo Couplet. So that's half of the answer to, does the plan connect to downtown well? For the rest of folks, I think the two key considerations, and this is, we can turn to the map up here now, if you're coming down MODOC and you see this very clearly marked Sherrod Lane that takes you over to Chino, and you're on Chino in a class-two lane through the west side, you come to this point in Mitchell-Treynan, you said, okay, well, do I want to go across town? Is this a destination for me? Do I want to go over to the Castillo system and then come down to this part of town? Or is my destination maybe somewhere closer to Pershing Park or SBCC? So in my opinion, yes. I think, I think that the proposal before you does a good job of connecting MODOC towards downtown. The east side questions, if I understand them correctly, the east side neighborhood management plan really spent a lot of time delving in and answering their own questions for their own neighborhood, and we didn't do a lot of new things here in this plan. We basically wanted to use that effort, which occurred a couple of years ago, and I know Jessica and Derek and Rob were involved in that. And so a lot of the proposals here get at what the community asked for back then, and it was reaffirmed in our outreach process. So, and then the last question, and I think maybe the most complicated one, and Derek, please chip in if you feel like, like you should, is this area of Alamar and State Street. So this actually gets at another issue before you. So we have a gap in the network here. We're looking at reconfiguring one or two intersections up here on Upper State, but those are kind of longer-term, higher-cost projects. I think at one point, we looked at a roundabout up here and one of these intersections, but the bottom line is, you're right, it's an awkward off-angle intersection, it's complicated in some ways, it has decent volumes. And that's why this proposal here, which is Padre-Pueblo, using the existing Chapala street lanes, maybe painting those green, looking at extending the bike lane on De Lavina down towards Padre, this to me kind of gets us a nice short-term solution at a fairly low cost to all of the, what I would call significant, longer-term gap closure system on Upper State. And the last thing I heard was about pedestrians, you know, as, as the bike and ped planner for the city, it's one of my charges. I'm constantly working with the advocates and in our engineering department and the department managers and the public on ped safety. So I do think that we're taking that into considerations in the plan. And I think to be, to be quite honest, most of our pedestrian safety issues deal with interactions between peds and vehicles. We do have some issues with peds and bicyclists, but I'm pretty confident that that's going to be a big filter for us as we go through the plan finalization.
The other thing to point out, just adding to what Peter said, and Peter, if you could just point to the area of De Lavina that we're talking about, it's that part of the backbone that kind of gets, it just looks like it's not straight. That's the, that would be the Chapala area. But then also De Lavina going down, if we did that alternative, that requires us going to one lane and a bike lane if we're not to remove parking. It's not a traffic issue, we don't think, that would be analyzed, but just so you know, that's what that would require. The other thing that wasn't, that Peter didn't mention, that we heard that, that had us consider that and the consultants, is that we heard, you know, the topography is really different in that area. If you're going upstate, it's a pretty big hill, but then just a little bit to the west of state, the topography is flatter. And so that's another issue in consideration. We heard from the community, yeah, I love going downstate, I'd take a different route coming back.
Right. And just a follow-up to that. So basically, if you were a sixth grader going to Peabody School from the west side, are you saying that you would go down either De Lavina, somewhere in that vicinity, you would, you would find your way either on De Lavina and across, where does it go, across there, east-west, the green?
Yeah, so we're looking at, we're looking at two connections, Padre and Pueblo.
Padre, okay. Oh, Padre and Pueblo.
This is Padre and this is Pueblo.
So you'd be suggesting that they would cross State Street at those locations and then go up the other side of State Street to Peabody?
So if I'm not mistaken, Peabody is up here.
Correct.
Blue dot.
Okay. So I guess I'm a little confused on where-
Oh, incident. So, so if it would depend, Commissioner Pujo, it would depend on which route we ultimately did with the green lane, which is kind of, you're showing there's two alternatives, right? The State Street or the De Lavina-Chapala, right? So, but either way, right, if they did the State Street, they would probably get off at Key Lloris and go up. And then if they were on the De Lavina side, if it was my kid, I would send them Key Palo, Colorado, turn right on Key Palo, Colorado to get into the neighborhood. So, you know, and every parent's a little bit different on how they would do that. But definitely the green lane offers that, kind of that breadcrumb feel, you know? You know, it's in front of my house here and it's in front of the school there, I guess I can get there.
Okay, other questions before we go to Ms. Rodriguez?
I have a question for the young man from the transportation planner. That's you, yeah. You spoke about a lot of concepts that I understood, and one that doesn't give me any mental image is, when you talked about Olive and Laguna, you said we could make them a couplet, which I get, or make one a bike boulevard. And I have no clue what that would look like.
Sure, yeah.
Like a description, thanks.
Yeah, so a bike boulevard is a treatment, it was sort of first pioneered by the city of Berkeley, and it's been since adapted to other places. Essentially, what it does is it identifies kind of low-volume streets where there's not a lot of folks who are driving on them. They oftentimes tend to be fairly residential streets. And it kind of sets up, you know, a sort of a very, very kind of, like a shared route on steroids is probably the best way to put it, where, and you have, you know, very kind of prominent bicycle identification. To use that example again, Berkeley, these very large bicycle symbols, which have kind of become a theme across our bike network. You use a lot of signs, it kind of can help folks, you know, make their decisions of where they're traveling, because there's no, in many cases, there's no bike lane to follow. There, you kind of signpost the route through that. And then oftentimes, you'll, you'll do specific treatments at intersections, it can make, that can make traveling by bicycle a little bit more convenient. Like one of the things that recently happened in the city here was over on Aliso's, where they put out some, some traffic kind of, sort of modifications in the intersections to let the bicyclists go through. And depending on how you lay it out, sometimes it diverts cars onto other streets or in different directions, sometimes local traffic can go through. Some similar treatments can be neighborhood traffic circles, where you'd see something kind of similar to a roundabout but at a smaller scale, oftentimes in the place of a stop sign and, or with a stop sign, it depends, there's a variety of ways of dealing with that. And then lastly, sometimes where there's a lot of stop signs, just instead of them being four-way stops or two ways in the opposite direction, you can flip those stop signs. So kind of it's this, you know, very comfortable bicycle route that doesn't involve bike lanes, where folks can still drive on the same corridor. Any other questions, or does that answer that? Great, yeah.
Other questions? Mr. Green?
The devil is always in the details, and I think the fourth quarter is awfully compressed. Mr. Jordan pointed out that there was no formal opportunity for the committees to review the draft. I would think that not only the committees, but the public should be afforded time, and there should be time to be able to react to those changes. That's my first of a couple of points. I'm wondering if the concept is yet in mind as to how the 98- I'm wondering if the concept is yet in mind as to how the 98 plan is going to be updated in terms of redlining or clearly delineating new materials. Is the feedback from today's session going to be incorporated before the council here? Is it, I believe, two weeks from now? I maybe, maybe it's three weeks from now, but I think that was the, the plan. Got a thought that all the sherros should be green, not just in certain areas, I think that there's some today that might need to be repainted with the new coloring, but any new sherros, because in my mind, I get confused between sherro lanes and bike lanes. The graphic has a bicycle in both, one has arrows, and I've forgotten how the straight bike lane is painted. Tiny point in terms of detail, Cota and Haley are green-lined as far as Milpus, but you're proposing the, sorry, the Alros Boulevard or treatment, and it should be extended there, I mean, that's just a net.
Oh, I should probably answer.
Oh, sorry.
The questions. Okay, so, first of all, about the draft, there will be ample time for the community to review the draft, it would go through the processes of draft, and, and then we would make changes to it, and we would be coming back if that was required. So, that's, that process will take place. And then we have, what's very unusual is we're also having this step, which, you know, most communities wouldn't do this step, where we'd come and also vet the initial thoughts. So in terms of time for review, this is very thorough. You want me to go through the rest of them, or do you?
Go, go.
Okay, okay. So, and then in terms of will there be updated, will this group, when this group adds, we will be telling the council what we're hearing, you know, it obviously won't be the taped version, it'll be the summary version, but we won't have time, actually, the council report's already even been generated, or it's in process of being generated, and more of a final review. So we will, and we will, at the presentation, be saying what the planning commission and the, and the TCC's recommendations are, and what their input was, and summarizing that. And then, I'd like someone to speak to the greenback sherros and tell us the difference, so that everyone makes sure they know, and then also respond to Cota and Haley. You want to do that, Peter?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the kind of feedback we're looking for, in terms of Cota and Haley, and I've actually heard it a couple of other times, and so that's an easy enough thing to do for the current proposal. I'm not sure if we would consider parking removal or a greenback sherro, but certainly the connection to Eliso Street Bike Boulevard makes sense. So, you know, that's something just, we'll do, so thank you for that input. And then, I'm trying to get back to the slide, I know it's kind of far back here, but, did I? Of all the different types in the survey? There it is. Okay, so, so, I also happen to agree with Commissioner Green that it makes sense in the cases where we're using sherros. Here's an example of a shared lane marking that does not have a green back, and if these are proving effective, and actually if the Federal Highway Administration allows us to do them, because currently you needed an exception to get them in, but that is apt to change, then it makes sense to me, from a safety standpoint, and a user, both driver and bicyclist standpoint, to turn all of our sherros into greenback sherros. There's a cost associated with that, so that is something that we are going to have to ask our council and our budget makers to consider. So, that's what a sherro looks like. A greenback sherro, obviously, is, is having a green backing behind it, this is the bike symbol, it's actually standardized in the, the design guidelines that we have to follow for the state and federal regulations, the size of the symbol, and so that, that basically demarcates a Class 2 lane, and those are often used in protected bike lanes and buffered bike lanes as well. The one stencil that's unique, that Colin mentioned, is the bike boulevard stencil, that's actually larger, it's probably the largest bike stencil that's allowed in the current guidelines, and that typically says the word "bike" in boulevard and has a large bicycle stencil on top of it. It's another way of just identifying to all road users of how the treatment is.
Did you have a thought yet on redlining the current plan or completely rewriting?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. This particular update of the plan is a very wholesale update, we do have updates where we just take the original, the, the current plan and we make minor changes, so we won't be, we won't be redlining, and also, the, the council asked for a much different process than we've had in the past, and instead of being more technically geared, it was more, what does the community want, and so the things you're seeing are in response to the community, whereas past plans didn't, didn't do that as, as directly or intentionally, so it's going to be not a redlined version, but you'll just see a whole new plan, but we're more than happy to provide you with, we have extra copies of the other plan, so that you can look at them side by side.
Okay, more questions? Mr. France?
Very quick question, thank you, because we have a number of public speakers ready. Mr. Dayton, is it fair to say that, as I'm kind of hearing from Commissioner Pujol and some others, that the level of the detail, in other words, the devil that is in the details, are, in this plan compared to the 98 plan, fairly explicit in terms of the routes and the types of treatments and the various trade-offs?
Say more about explicit.
So what I mean to say is, it seems to me like, this is kind of the nutrition labeling of a plan. It's like, you don't, you don't just see it, but you actually like, look at the ingredients, and how many calories in sodium, and you kind of go in eyes wide open, like, oh, you know, this is 30% of my, my sodium today, you know, we're talking about, of the 500 blocks of bike lanes to potentially add to their network, talking about 10 blocks of potential parking removal. Would you consider that more detail than was available in the 98 bike plan?
Committee member France, it's hard to answer your question, I think maybe I'll just answer it my words, you know, when we started this process, we knew that we had done all the simple things, you know, the biggest thing that came out of the last master plan was this strategy of, very simple strategy, where you have the room striped bike lanes when you repave the street. And we doubled the bike lane miles on that approach. Some of the more harder, challenging, community-wrenching projects, a shoreline drive, that was a huge change, a huge bike project that involved two lanes of traffic going into a bike path. So, that, and that's very, that was unusual. This represents, what we heard from the community, it does have, I think parking removal is, is going to be painful, particularly for those who use it, right, in those locations, and so if, I, but I was surprised that this was, at the end of the day, only that much. I think that I was expecting that it would probably be more and more challenging, so I'm glad with that, not that it's easy, or not that it will even be done. So, does that begin to answer your question?
I guess so. Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I just want to make one closing comment, and that is that the bike share idea really struck me as a great, great concept. I've only seen it, excuse me, I've only seen it in New York City, near the High Line, and we, my family I was traveling with used it quite a bit, because somebody wanted to go this direction, somebody wanted to go that direction, and I could see it quite adaptable, quite adaptable in our city, where the, you just take the bike and put in some money and take it away and then bring it back. I think it's wonderful, excuse me, a wonderful idea.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? Ms. Pujol?
I have a follow-up, back to the plan. I just want to pull together, like, going to reconfirm where I think I am on some of this, what, what we, what we're going to get when we see the draft, when it finally comes out, because I don't believe we're going to have an opportunity to go through a scoping discussion and whatnot after this. But, I just would like to say, and I believe what committee member France may have been getting to, is this work we're doing now on the actual mapping out of the critical bike links, the backbone and the connectors, and all those good things we've been talking about today, will actually become part of the bicycle master plan, correct? It doesn't go alongside with it as some sort of list, but it actually becomes part of, with all the kind of detail we've been getting to today, I, I, I think, and, and that's a, that's a good thing, because it tells us where, it's leading us forward to, to completion, and, and along with that, I would just like to say that it's going to be very important when we see the draft, that there's a clear section on the applicability of the bicycle master plan and how it ties with other policy documents, and the applicability particularly because I believe this is more than just a public works-driven document, it also perhaps can be something that future development, private development in the city may look to, to do their little part, you know, kind of like we have the sidewalk infill conditions on our, our projects and things, and I, I think the applicability section's going to be very important and needs to be very clear. And then as to Mr. Green's comment about redlining, in whatever version, I understand, there's a point where it gets to be so much redlining, you can't understand what you're looking at anymore, and so you end up with a whole new document, but in that case, I think we will need some sort of cheat sheet document, so we can figure out what's out and what's in. I'm on the subcommittee, along with a couple other commissioners here, for the local coastal plan update, and we, they, the staff with that group has developed something for us so we can tell, like, what's changing without actually doing a lot of the redlining, so something like that, so we can guide our way through and understand the differences, I would assume.
We could do that, for sure, but I do want to just kind of pause on that comment and say, that's why this process has been so different. All the policies in, in the circulation element and the bike plan are, do bike lanes, do, serve the bike, improve the system, go, 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 go. There, there's nothing that holds anything back, all this would be consistent with the policies that we already have, we just didn't do it as a policy-driven effort, we did a, hey, let's just, hey, let's kind of put all that aside, not even think about it, and we haven't, and let's, and let's engage the community. So it'll be kind of interesting to see how we respond to your comment, given the process we've had, and, and we haven't thought a little bit about that, so that'll be interesting for the team to think about.
Okay, I just have one quick question myself, before we go to the comment. On the draft network facilities map, there are a lot of gray routes that are identified as supplementary facilities that weren't discussed in the presentation, and I just wanted to know how those are going to be included in the ultimate plan.
Chair Boach, so the, the grayed-out routes, you know, we, we're, we're an hour and 45 minutes in, and one of our, one of our ideas was to focus on kind of the, the core network. I do think there are some important connections that are grayed out, I think that they should be described with one-line items in your summary report, so the best place to, to get at what those projects mean is to go to the back of your summary report by neighborhood and read what those say. I, I also don't think, getting back to Commissioner Schwartz's early comment about priorities, I'm not sure that we have any priorities yet, we're probably not there yet, it seems to me like the community, almost overwhelmingly, if you, if you think 91% is a high number, is asking for all of these projects. So if your commissions make a recommendation to council to develop a plan that includes all of these, we'll have much more detailed answers, and hearing loud and clear from the commission, come back and vet those in a draft form with you all.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to go to public comment, and anyone who would like to speak and hasn't filled out a speaker's form, if you could fill one out, they're over on the ledge at the side of the room, and turn it in, and we will get to you. First speaker is David Gay, to be followed by Cameron Gray.
Hello, my name is David Gay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I wanted to let everybody know, you each have two minutes.
All right. First, I want to thank the staff, the consultants, all the participants, this is the greatest start to a plan I've seen, and I've worked on bike plans for over 40 years, so it's, it's really great, I hope you appreciate your team, it's, it's a great start, even if you don't agree with it all, it, the team's done a great job. But the list of projects you've seen tonight, I think I've heard it from several of you, is not a plan. There's a lot of texts, goals, policies, programs, I think, that, that, that need to be developed, and so I want to take just, just a minute to maybe drill two or three words into your head, I hope, as this goes forward and as you direct the staff, and that's number one, safety. I, I think that safety is, is a large concern for any of us that ride bikes, but it's a concern also for pedestrians and the drivers, so safety for everyone. Second is connectivity. We want to fill in the gaps, I, I think that's important in looking at those routes, and that it be part of a system. A route, or a piece of route, just because it's a low-hanging fruit, easy to put in, that goes nowhere and doesn't connect, isn't of value, quite, quite honestly. And then need, and, and by the way, the, the, the need is now and the future, so we need to look at it, especially when you're talking about prioritizing the direction to staff in those, in that prioritization, is looking at the need, where are the demands, where do people want to go from and to, what are the generators? And it's, so, so not all, there's so many projects up there, you won't be able to do them all for years and years and years, so again, some way of looking at which ones are important as opposed to those that aren't. And, and this is just personal note, lots of green paint, I like bright paint, and that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Cameron Gray will be followed by Mike Suting.
Good evening, commissioners and committee members. My name is Cameron Gray, I'm speaking on behalf of the Community Environmental Council, and we would like to express our support for staff's recommendation to approve the completion of the community engagement process and move forward with the drafting of the bicycle master plan. We also hope that the draft bicycle master plan will include a specific mode-share goal for bicycling, a list of actions the city can take to meet this goal, and a clear plan for funding and expansion of the bicycle network in our community. There are numerous and compelling reasons to support the growth of bicycling transportation here in Santa Barbara. Bicycling is one of the greatest opportunities that we have to address global climate change, local air, local air pollution, and traffic congestion. By closing gaps in our current bicycle network and providing improved bicycling facilities, we can make bicycling more accessible and increase the safety of our roadways. The BMP is the first step, the bicycle master plan is the first step to realizing these benefits and improving the quality of life in our community. Other cities have seen the vision and promise of a strong bicycle network, and they have provided the financial backing to create this network. The city of San Luis Obispo recently established a specific bicycle mode-share goal of 20%, and they enacted a policy that makes the allocation of general fund transportation dollars proportional to this mode-share goal. This means that 20% of San Luis Obispo's general fund dollars for transportation will go to bicycling. Santa Barbara has been a leader in bikability for the past decade. To remain a leader, we should be taking similar actions to fund our bicycle network updates. The Community Environmental Council is very excited about the proposed updates that staff and consultants have recommended for consideration in the bicycle master plan update. In line with these actions that San Luis Obispo have taken, we hope that the draft plan for Santa Barbara will include these types of bike mode-share goals, and that the plan will have a strong, strong basis for funding these bicycle improvements. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Mike Suting, followed by Wilson Hubble.
Hi, everyone, my name is Mike Suting, and I was born up there in Santa Barbara Street, and I've lived here for over 45 years. I used to be just a recreational bicyclist, but when my daughter wanted the car and I needed exercise, I decided to commute more, and so I did, out to Citrix and Greta. I changed a chapter in my life, now I have a job at Logic Monitor on Correa Street, it's a small software company, it's doing really well, really exciting, and I still ride my bike, it's eight miles, I take State Street, some of those green routes, and, you know, I still like to recreation cycle. My daughter and my wife won't go riding with me because it's not safe enough, so they say biking's for the brave, and I don't think it should be just for the brave, it should be for everyone. And so I really like this plan, I think it's, you know, great, and I've been to some other great cities. A lot of them are bigger, you know, Portland has an excellent bike friendliness reputation. I've even been to Germany and Karlsruhe, where I did some work there for a couple weeks and commuted on bike, and it was amazing to see all the bicyclists. The last point I want to make is that biking is good for not just individuals, it's good for the city. It allows more people to enjoy the city and share it, as it takes up less space. You know, cars become a burden, when you got to park them, and you got to park them far away and walk. Biking is freedom, and it gives more people freedom to enjoy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wilson Hubble, followed by Eve Sanford.
Hello, my name is Wilson Hubble. I'm speaking for myself this evening, I'm a past president of the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition. I'm also a retired Santa Barbara County employee. Once upon a time, I was a combination of Rob Dayton and Peter. I used to have hair and it wasn't gray. One of those jobs. The previous speakers have basically taken the wind out of my sails completely, I really don't have much to add, except to say that I'm also a 41-year member of the Automobile Club of Southern California, the AAA. I own three cars, I drive more than I ride my bike. This plan is not only good for cyclists, it's good for motorists as well. Most cyclists, by the way, most cyclists that you see on the road are drivers, they also own cars. Most drivers who are cyclists, which are most of us, will tell you that good bicycling facilities are good for motorists, and they're good for cyclists. There's a lot of good facilities in here, and the good news is, is that most of it can be done with paint. You don't have to build a lot of stuff, but it does take courage to put that paint down, because there are some political considerations that come up very quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eve Sanford, followed by Stephen Botts.
Hi, good evening, Transportation, Circulation Committee and Planning Commission. Thank you for taking time to review the draft Bicycle Master Plan, which I'm happy to see is progressing. Thank you, okay. I have a background working in pedestrian and bicycle planning, as well as a degree in urban planning. I both live and ride a bike in Santa Barbara, and I also own a car, which I mainly use for longer trips, primarily like driving outside of the city. I would like to commend city staff for their work preparing the draft plan, and also the consultants for doing a really great job on the outreach, and just wonderful graphics that really display some great projects. I think it's wonderful that Santa Barbara has historically worked to provide really great bikeways in the city. Some great examples of this include State Street and the Bath &amp; Castillo Couplet, as well as the bike front, the beachfront bike paths. I'd like to draw attention to how well these projects complement existing bikeways. It's important that this bike plan be passed and implemented in order to fill some gaps that are currently existing in the bicycle network. When a bike lane disappears and it doesn't connect to another bike lane or a bike path, it creates a situation that's not only dangerous, but it's just also discouraging to young riders, families that want to ride with children, and also our elderly populations. So in conclusion, I'd just like to say that this draft plan presents a series of projects that will allow people to bike safely from homes to their destinations, and I'd like to urge the city to move forward with the drafting of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Botts, followed by Dean Axelrod.
Good evening, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I suppose thank you very much for spending your efforts diligently to come about something that's going to be good for all of us here in Santa Barbara. I'm a driver in the city, I ride a bike occasionally, but I drive a lot more than I ride. Probably it's true that myself and other drivers are getting more and more distracted all the time. And as a driver, I feel like the safest situation occurs when I can predict what a bicyclist is going to do, when I know what they're doing, and they know what they're doing, and, you know, what they should be doing, along with drivers, we all need to get along on the road. I think that the Bicycle Master Plan should encourage awareness and visibility on the streets. And what happens for me is when I see bike lanes, if they're dull drab bike lanes, I don't think about them that much. If I see green flashy lanes, I'll say, whoa, I better pay attention here, something's going on. It seems to me that's a pretty low-cost way to implement a lot of safety improvements. And so from my perspective, I think that would be a good way to go on that. And I, it looks like a pretty nice plan, I do see that they're planning on using, you know, some of that, so I was encouraged with that result. As we move to a more sustainable future, where more people need to ride, and I hope to get more riding in myself, but there's different classes of users need to all coexist on the roads, and I think that this Bicycle Master Plan needs to take us there. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Dean Axelrod, followed by Jeff Rawlings.
Good evening, I, there have been so many eloquent comments, my name is Dean Axelrod, there have been so many eloquent comments, I'd like to incorporate them by reference and point out that I, I don't have a lot more to add, but there is something I would like to shine some light on that hasn't been addressed yet, at least not underscored the way I'd like it to be. I am not only a homeowner in Santa Barbara, I live on the Mesa, I'm also a businessman, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and what I haven't heard a lot of talk about yet is the value of this plan to the business community and to the prosperity of our community. The ability to attract the kinds of businesses and the kinds of employees that we want to make our community strong and successful for the long term is going to depend a lot on having a strong bicycle infrastructure. I drive a lot, I ride when I can, I see the value both as a driver, as a pedestrian, as a cyclist, and again, as a business owner, I can't underscore enough how important it is. And we've seen it, when I talk to other business owners, who themselves are cyclists and want to have a business in a community like this, that supports cycling, and who complain about the difficulty of getting good employees and keeping good employees. And we've seen, especially in the technology types of businesses, and the newer kinds of businesses that we'd like to bring in, the employees who want to work there support this kind of infrastructure. So please keep that in mind, I think it's a fantastic proposal, I strongly urge you to put your support behind it and move forward with this plan.
Thank you very much. Jeff Rawlings, followed by Ivor John.
Hi, I'm Jeff Rawlings, I'm a homeowner, parent, and business owner, entrepreneur in Santa Barbara, I've been here for about 15 years. And I want to just reiterate what Dean said, for the business community, for parents, having a safe way to get on your bike and get to work, get to school, is the number one way to encourage more usage of the bike as a mode-share. And, you know, as a member of the startup community and the entrepreneurial community here, the kinds of employees that are starting businesses and working in the technology sector are strongly interested in having that as an option, and having Santa Barbara be a world-class bicycling city. So I hope you'll, you know, continue with your process and adopt a new master plan to expand bicycle mode-share. Thanks.
Thank you. Ivor John, did I say your name right?
You did, you did very well.
Oh, thank you. And followed by Dr. Daniel Fishbein.
Commissioners and council members, thanks for the opportunity to speak, I'm Ivor John, I've been biking in this community for nearly 30 years now, mostly commuting, and sometimes for recreation. I've been following the process, or I thought I had, but I've learned a lot tonight about how the process is really working, and Commissioner Pujul, thank you so much for asking all the difficult questions that I've been struggling with. So some of my comments relate to that, but in a sense, I'm looking at what we've got here, and I see, well, what are we planning for? The piece that's missing for me is, we've got the infrastructure piece, but how do you know that that's the right infrastructure to do what we wanted to do? We got the cart before the horse. So now we see all these pieces, it's beautifully done, there's a lot of good engineering here, safety for all, safe bikeways, close the gaps, lots of detail, lots of maps with dots on. But I think what I want to see is, what do we want the plan to do for us as a community? And some of the speakers before me have really addressed that issue, saying, you know, biking can serve this community, and I think the policy piece, which now I understand will come, will be in words around all of this, that's the glue that will hold this together. And then you can say, does this infrastructure really serve the needs of the community and what we wanted to do? This is a rare opportunity to be bold, you know, I think we've got a great start here, and I think now as we move forward with the process, I'd like to see the community of this process set some bold goals. I think that, looking at the statistics of who is riding, commuting was not up there, it was recreation, it was for exercise, I didn't see commuting on there, if I did, I missed it. I ride an electric bike, I'd like to see a little bit of discussion around that, because I think it's a fabulous way to commute, but I think really emphasizing in the planning process how this infrastructure can help the commuters, as some of my previous commentators said tonight, I'd love to see that. So here's, in summary, a rare opportunity, set some bold goals, build off the details we've got, and let's have a real big vision for this community that addresses our sustainability needs, climate change needs. And then Commissioner Lodge, thank you for talking about statistics, data, where are the bikers? We need data. If we're trying to get somewhere, we should be measuring things, and particularly with safety. Do these engineering, you know, treatments work to improve safety? I would love to see us get analytical around this, and really work on the Vision Zero that gets us to a very safe community for all street users. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Daniel Fishbein, followed by Christine Holvik.
I know speakers aren't allowed to show slides, but if you'll at least allow me to put this up here. I'd like to, I'm a medical epidemiologist, a public health physician, and that is a map of all the serious and fatal collisions in the Santa Barbara area over the last 13 years. There's about 10 of those collisions a year, and I'd just like to speak to the apparent division of Vision Zero and the Bicycle Master Plan, that is, we're going forward with the wonderful plan, I love bicycling, to build the wonderful bicycle routes, but I think safety has to be part of that plan, not something that's perhaps saved four to six months from now, which is, I've heard quoted numerous times, that it is going to be next, not built into this. Beyond that, I just a couple of, so I'd be happy to supply the information that I've developed about safety, which perhaps the most notable thing is that up to 50% of the bicycle collisions in this town involve bicycles only, and most of those bicyclists are unhelmeted. And it goes on and on, where the safety emphasis has to be not only with better roads, but also with better bicycle behavior.
Christine Holvik, and that's the last speaker slip I have, so if anyone else wants to speak, please get your slip turned in.
I am a City of Santa Barbara business owner and homeowner, who immigrated from San Francisco 31 years ago. My three children were born and raised here to be cyclists. All five of us are recreation and transportation cyclists. My daughter is a very amazing competition cyclist. Two of us have had serious crashes, speaking of safety, I have a permanent brain injury from that. For me, as a driver and a bike rider, if you don't ride a bike, please don't look at this plan like a car driver, but trust those of us who ride bicycles, because we look at the roads from a completely different perspective. So just trust those of us who live and do this, and it's really a different viewpoint. When you sit on a bicycle and you're actually doing it, you just can't imagine, even if you drive a car, you just can't imagine what it's like to do that, and to drive these roads and go these routes. So I just wanted to give that little extra tidbit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will close public comment and bring it back for discussion among ourselves. I'm not quite sure how to go about this, but Ms. Blackerby.
I'll model comments and feedback for you. So I appreciate all the questions, to sort of figure out, where are we going, what do you want from us? And definitely appreciate the public comments, good to see new and old faces who come to meetings on topics like this, so it's really nice to hear that people are engaged. And I also want to, you know, thank the staff and the consultants for the great process that you laid out and then have pursued. And I went to the Uptown Neighborhood Summit, thought it was really well-done, really cool to, I mean, I'm a nerd about this anyway, but to get to, you know, really break it down street by street and say, you know, oh yeah, that's a problem, or, oh, I didn't think about that idea. So I really appreciate it, it's a really creative way to go about things. But for what it seems like you're asking for, as far as feedback goes, you know, all of the kind of draft network facilities, I think, are good, are a good idea. Obviously, some of them will be easier to crack than others, but when we, I mean, you know, this is a master plan, right? So it's a bicycle master plan, it's not just a project, one project, or like even the eastside planning effort that we did, you know, that was sort of a broader thing, but it's not as big as this. So, you know, of course, there's 24 things listed or more, right? So I think if we, you know, a lot of us sort of suffered through the general plan update, right? It's not as big as that, but it's still pretty big and it's still pretty important. So I hope that we'll look at it from that broader view of, it's, we're not going to get it all done in the next two years, right? I mean, I'd love to do most of it in the next few years, but we're really setting out that map to move forward and see where we want the city to go. So, you know, I'm definitely supportive of the proposal, so first, the kind of backbone, the spine of all this, the green bike lanes, I think it's great, just noticing the new facility out on Los Carneros, that they have updated out in Guelita, if any of you've been there, since they replaced the railroad bridge, they have green lanes, and it's very, very helpful and clear, I haven't biked out there, but I've driven near it, very, very clear how to get through the intersections, and where the bikes can go and where they merge in. And that is a great cue for bicyclists, for wayfinding, but it's also really useful. Because, yeah, bike lanes do, you know, they say bike lane, and they have a, you know, bike stencil on them, but they can blend in. It's white paint, so is everything else, you know, it's, as we know, we don't have the funds to repaint our stripes every year, right? So they sort of fade, so I think the green is a really good idea. I think State, possibly the De La Vina-Chapala, you know, definitely analyzing that and looking at that is important. Mitchell Torena, also, it really has the capacity to be a great backbone. It is in some ways now, but there are definitely gaps where it gets a little dicey. And then I think the creativity of looking at Cota is great, because I was just, well, I biked in the area earlier today, and Cota definitely needs work, but God knows, it's better than Gutierrez. So, and I know that that's So, and I know that that's like a whole thing, that we may all be dead by the time Gutierrez gets resolved. I hope we're not, but we may be. So as far as the green pieces, I think those are really great. Obviously, with removal of parking, which was actually in the staff report, and the materials, you know, obviously, we gotta, we have to weigh that. And I agree, Rob, I expected more to be proposed. I'm glad there's not as much, but if we do it, you know, if we have trade-offs in particular ways, then it's something we need to get serious about. The Couplet, the Bath &amp; Castillo Couplet extension, I've been asking for that for a really long time, so I think that would be great. Obviously, working with the hospital to make sure that that works as far as their circulation and flow. Pedregosa, really good idea. Mission is very scary, and like, no one's on Pedregosa, so I think that makes sense. I think Olive &amp; Laguna will take quite a bit of analysis, either doing the Couplet or doing the sort of modified thing that was proposed, because I just have a feeling people are going to raise a fuss about that. The west side piece, Chino and San Andreas, I think is interesting. I like the connection to Modoc, the kind of eucalyptus area piece could be good. Definitely, that area needs some work, because there's so much competition with, thankfully, consistent buses going through, but also with the buses and the cars and the cyclists. It gets really tight and complicated. Also, bear with me, also appreciating the Wentworth, looking at Rancharia and Wentworth. I just recently moved to the West Beach area, and I have, for the first time, took the, like, Ortega-Wentworth overcrossing, which is really nice on a bike, I have to say. I'm sure it's even nicer walking, but the way that it's made, so being able to connect through that neighborhood in a safer way, to be able to get to that great facility, I think, would be nice. I like the Bike Boulevard, things that have been brought up, and all the places they've been mentioned, and especially the moving through on the east side, connecting Old Coast, Pedos and Canada, I think would be great, because, yeah, no one's going to go down Salinas. It's just no good. And then the, you know, the upper, I learned in, at the Upper State workshop, I had, I've lived near the area for a long time, I had no idea that there was the little, like, foothill route through the neighborhoods, no clue. I've been the sucker riding down State Street, so it'd be great to have people know about that, and sign it in a particularly useful way. And then obviously, you know, we've talked a ton, in the TCC anyway, about Las Pacitas and Cliff, and connecting everything, and making it more usable, and very excited about the multipurpose path out there. So the one other thing I'll add is, I appreciate people bringing up the business piece, and I know it was sort of mentioned at the end, but bike parking, and so things other than on-the-road improvements, or, you know, bike lanes getting from one place to another, I really hope that in the plan, folks get creative, because I know there was a lot of feedback in the workshop I was in, anyway, about creative, you know, where are folks parking their bikes? We know what they're doing to get from home, to work, to shopping, to school, to whatever, but what are they doing with them, once they get there? Is there safe bike storage? There's not, mostly, overnight, anyway. What can we do in neighborhoods to make bike parking safer? Because, you know, we're 65% renters, and it would be nice if maybe we didn't all have to cram our bikes into our living rooms or kitchens every night, so that it would be there the next day. And then bike corrals, right? We've had a great experience with two of them so far, one in the Funk Zone and one on Cana Prudito. They're well-liked, they're used, they look great. All the businesses want them. Several more businesses in the city want them, ask for them. This happens in every city, you put a bike corral in, people are clamoring to have them near their spot. So I hope that we'll really get serious about where could we put all those things? You know, if we're dreaming big on the networks, which cost way more, you know, let's dream big on the kind of additional facilities there. So, and I appreciate the gentleman who shared the mode share information about San Luis Obispo and the 20%. I think that's really cool, especially that they're spending that much money. And I should go watch their hearings, because I'm sure there was lots of bloodshed around that. But anyway, so I think that's all I have for now. Hopefully, that's what you wanted. And if it wasn't, well.
Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, I thought it was an excellent presentation, well researched, very professional. You obviously did a lot of work, so thank you for all that hard work, and it's paid off, because I think the plan, to me, looks digestible and understandable, and so I may have to leave before the vote's taken, but you can count me as a yes to move it forward. Just a couple questions, though, or sort of additional comments. I'd like to see you take a stab, staff, take a stab at prioritizing this with some analytics, if you can. This may be too much to ask, but I'll put it out there, anyway. There's got to be some way of modeling the different components of what makes up your priority list, like your population density served by the improvements, the traffic or safety data for that particular area, and then the dollars and cents for that particular improvement. To come up with some way of quantifying where we're headed with some of these improvements, I'd like to see that back in the plan when it comes back. You're going to get some flack, I feel, for the, with regard to the quality of your survey instrument, so just, to me, seems like it was a bicycle-oriented crowd that was surveyed. So I want to encourage you to emphasize how, what was shared earlier by some speakers, how the project and the plan really addresses both crowds. I don't know how you do that, but you guys are the pros. The plan, if you just look at the map, it's sort of, you're kind of, you've got the bottom half of Santa Barbara well-mapped out with your improvements, but the top half is a little short-changed, and I, I think anecdotal, well, we all know that's, the population density isn't there, and those are the, maybe the higher-priced improvements, but pulling people from the neighborhoods into Santa Bar, into downtown would be a great objective, and I'd just like to see you study that a little bit more. It's, you know, sort of, in our field of planning, we like to at least think regionally, if not act and implement regionally. I know we can't do that, we're a little constrained, because it's the city project, but with regard to that, excuse me, pulling people out of the neighborhoods, you've got some connections that need to be made on 192. Some of those cross over into county and incorporated areas, but at least you ought to think about analyzing those, if not putting them on the priority list, or putting them at the bottom. There's a lot of people that ride 192, and I just, I just, when I'm driving 192, I freak out, because it's so dangerous. People go so fast on that road, yet there's such a high level of attraction to ride that road to get to Gibraltar. So I didn't see much in the plan about that, but I think that's an area that you could perhaps work on. Cliff Drive, as it gets into Hope Ranch, that's another great place to ride recreationally. Hit the beach route, go through Hope Ranch, pop out somewhere else, and it just, you know, it stops. So maybe some thought in there, if you can, with regard to that. And then I'll have all kinds of comments about your specifics, excuse me, sorry, but I'll just leave it at what I would, I would love to see the foothill route, some discussion about some one-way improvements for vehicular traffic that could open up that foothill route to a greater level of pedestrian and bicycle traffic, because it's, you know, no sidewalks out there, and that's a big deal in a highly-trafficked area for Peabody School. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Next, June Pujol.
So as the first comment I'll make is, in listening to all of the discussion and presentations and comments today, I really find that there has been this rare synergy in terms of the comments. I haven't heard anything that I disagree with. Every single comment I've heard, I think is a really good point. And to that, although I know that, you know, the turnaround is pretty quick with going to the city council, regardless of that, I would like to see at least a bullet-point summary list of all of the good comments that were brought up today, because I think that would be, is a good check sheet for months later, when we come back and review this plan again as a draft. And so I would like to request that that be done, even if it can't be done in time for the city council hearing. The next comment I would like to make is, you know, having been part of the group that developed the circulation element way back in the early 90s, and watching, but not necessarily part of the general plan group that developed our current general plan, at least getting up to speed on that, I find the bones of this to be very much in line with the goals of the circulation element and our new general plan. The one slight hedging caveat that I would like to continue to be assured, you can only do one piece of a plan at a time, and so we're doing the Bicycle Master Plan here, but I would like to see some information, either in staff report or presentations next time that we hear this, on how this piece fits in with the other transportation components, because what we ask for here in the city is to be multimodal, and this is one of the modes, and it's important to develop it in a cohesive way, which is, obviously, we've done a great job with so far, but I'd like to get some sense of how that fits in with some of the other pieces, just an acknowledgement of that, I think is good. But it's going in the right direction, as far as I am concerned, from my perspective. In terms of some of the details of the plan, I think we've gotten a lot of those comments today, just to mention that the backbone, the green section on the map, just interesting, because I'm very familiar with the, most of it, particularly in the northern part. I live on Chapala, which is where one of the alternatives of part of the green lane may be, and I also own another property on Mitchell-Torreya, which is where another part of the green lane is being proposed. And although I am not, I mean, bicycling is not my most frequent mode of transportation, in looking at this, though, it makes a lot of sense. And I know that any plan like this is ultimately going to result in some things that are different and new, and, you know, for where I am and for my property on Mitchell-Torreya, I know that will result in some change that we're not accustomed to, particularly in Mitchell-Torreya, we'll remove some parking, but it's for the greater good, let's say, and I think it makes sense in these locations, and I think it will all really be an exciting improvement once we kind of get used to the idea of that. In terms of some of the things, like where parking does need to be removed, like Mitchell-Torreya and perhaps Rancharia and all, I do think we need to deal with the other pieces, the little pieces of it, and hope that when the plan comes back, it'll say, okay, so how are we going to accommodate some of those losses elsewhere? And I think there's plenty of ideas of how you can do that. I don't think it's rocket science to figure that out, and so I think that basically what we have structured here as the backbone, you call it, I think is a very good plan. I'm very supportive of it with, you know, the need to flush it out a little bit more. And then the last comment I have comes back to public discourse on the remainder of the project. I mentioned earlier, and I'll mention again, that it's going to be very important that we have ample opportunity for that when we see the draft, and I believe Committee Member Green mentioned something along that lines as well. And so I'll be looking forward to the ability and the comments that come out when it's a little bit more flushed out. And Commissioner Higgins mentioned something about the edges of the city, particularly where, you know, maybe the city limit lines bleed over into some of that county routes as well. And I would just like to mention that in addition to general public comment, when the draft comes back, and the ability to kind of really have something that's a little robust in terms of public comment at that time period. I think it's also important, and I hope to see, that we get comments from other jurisdictions and agencies, and I don't know, I didn't hear it tonight, but perhaps, you know, some information on how the discussion where, you know, with the county counterparts, where we have those edges of the city involved in the schools, and some of the other bigger agencies involved, I think we'd be interested to see how they look at the plan, and hopefully support and maybe add and embellish it as well. That being said, I'll be supporting the recommendation, but I do, again, in the same theme of community input, I have one slight concern in the wording of the recommendation in the staff report. I understand where it's coming from, because this has been a structured, formalized outreach program to this point, but I have, I find, you know, you can look at things from the outside and read words in a different way, and where it says that the committee find the community engagement process complete, I find that a little bit rough in its language. So I don't know if there's another way to rephrase that, to make it more clear that it's this first phase of this structured outreach that's completing, but not lead anybody to think that the public input period is over, because I think it has a long ways to go. So those are my comments, thanks.
Ms. Schwartz.
We could even say the committee engagement phase is complete.
Maybe the initial, the first, something like that, I would say, because I wouldn't want to lead anybody to thinking that there's no public comment to come.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Chair Bosch. First, I want to commend the council, who's not here this evening, but along with staff and the general approach that's been taken, because I think the community engagement component, which has really been the primary focus to date, has been so important, and I want to reference some data, speaking of data, that we've received, that I think illustrates. While self-selective nonetheless, we have been able to interest and engage enough of the public, so that on page six of the materials we have under Chapter Two, Survey Results and Findings, 51% have expressed that their primary mode is the car. So I think if we only had turned out, had engaged bicyclists, sort of the hardcore bicycling community only, I don't think we would see this data. We wouldn't have this kind of community feedback. So I believe, and I know this was a concern, and some skepticism by some of the council members initially, it seems to me, we've really done, we've gone the distance in engaging as full a community as possible. I've been involved in focus groups and community engagement in my professional life for many years, and it's really difficult, on any topic, to engage the full spectrum of all demographics of an entire geographic area. So I just want to commend staff and the consultants for doing that, and I did attend the Downtown Summit, which, by the way, I thought reflected tremendous diversity of our community. And here, again, I think goes to my compliments to staff and the consultants for communicating with, educating, and engaging as much as the community as possible. Okay, now to the master plan that we have before us, or perhaps the initial phase. And I want to contrast what I'm about to say with our 1998 plan, because I think, I think we can do a lot better. So when I look at the 1998 So when I look at the 1998 plan, there's one overarching concern that I've had, and I want to suggest to staff and the consultants, that we restructure our current plan to make it more enlightened and more contemporary. Chapter four of the 1998 plan is goals, policies, and coordination. If we contrast that with our current general plan, which our planning commission put, brought forward to the city council in 2010, followed by the council's unanimous approval, principles and goals and policies are the anchoring elements of our general plan. So a chapter four needs to be a chapter one, in my opinion, in terms of our principles, our goals, and our policies. And then, as some of the other attendees here, the participants suggested referencing and synergizing those principles, goals, and policies with others that now exist in our general plan, so that they're synergistic. So that's what I would say, just by contrast in general, about our 1998 plan with the current plan. Now, in terms of goals, I just want to be brief in this regard, because I spoke, I had a communication both with Mr. Brown and Mr. Dayton back in April, the planning commission's April 2nd hearing. I had some concerns about what I felt were insufficiently defined project goals, and Mr. Brown and Mr. Dayton will recall my communications with them about this, but I feel it's so important, and I heard members of the public speak to this tonight, that we have to have very clear, and I would suggest bold goals, indeed, bold goals, but very clearly defined goals, from which flow, you know, the community engagement, those outcomes, the technical engineering feasibility recommendations, the infrastructure and network recommendation improvements that we're being asked to support, and that staff and the consultants will take to council. Without having clearly defined upfront goals, I think we're really, in my opinion, with all due respect to all the work that's been done, are really just looking at technical recommendations, infrastructure recommendations, without them being anchored to this larger vision of where we're going, and the basis of why we want to go where we're going. So I hope that might make sense to you, Mr. Dayton, and the team. Now, going back to the packet that, kind of the beginning of the packet that we have before us, I would concur with Commissioner Pujo, that I think, I think there's, I think it's warranted that you reconsider the language that's right in that first paragraph as to what we're doing here tonight and what you're asking the council to do. That goes back to my comment about principles, goals, and policies. You know, in that first, find the community engagement process complete and recommend, well, it's much bigger than that, isn't it? And we want it to be much bigger than that, and more robust and bolder than that, so I'll leave the language to you and the consultants to consider. I have a couple of other comments here. In terms of prioritization, I asked that question early on this evening, and I heard Commissioner Higgins, I believe, reference that. I think that for this to make sense to the next set of decision makers, and ultimately the council, again, I referenced our, very similar to our capital improvement program discussions and decision making, perhaps you look at prioritization in terms of, and I think I heard this maybe both by staff and members of the public, short term, long term, sort of more financially feasible, the low-hanging fruit, you know, paint on the street, just like what we went through with Cliff Drive. So that we take this up as soon as possible to make these improvements, as soon as council puts their stamp of approval on whatever the final plan is, that we move forward very expeditiously with the least cost improvements that will give us the highest yield. So I don't know if a kind of a matrix might be developed between staff and the consultants to sort of triangulate, do a triage on this list of 24 with short term, long term ties to our principles, goals, policies, what can be accomplished in what period of time at the least cost with the highest yield for the community, given the factors that have already been considered by staff and the consultant, in terms of what we've heard from the community, are their desires and their needs. So I think that's it for me. Oh, excuse me, let me make, we have a slide, I just want to reference. We had a slide this evening, additional considerations. I wasn't clear on these five bullet points here, enforcement, education, intersection improvements, bicycle parking, bike share. As additional considerations, I'm not sure the role that these play, or where they factor into the next iteration of the draft. Certainly at the end, and I want to close with this, I think public education is key in whatever on-the-ground infrastructure improvements the council decides to make. We've heard from members of the public that safe bicycling is also safe fraudos and safe pedestrians, but I think in changing the way our infrastructure looks and the way we use it, I think is going to take a very robust, I would suggest, a very robust education program that goes along with that. Because you've engaged the community in a very robust way to date, but I think when all is said and done, whatever, whether it's paint or significant infrastructure changes are made, the public will need to be brought along with those changes to understand them, and then be able to interact with those in a very safe and satisfied way. So thank you again so much. Thank you, Chair Bosch.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
I don't disagree with anything I've heard so far tonight. I do have some contrarian views for a couple items, but again, I went to, I think, I didn't get my, I didn't get my special pin or anything from Peter, but I think I went to four out of five of the summits, and I was really impressed with the job that was done by both city staff and by the consultants. I think in hindsight, the only, the only two cents I have there is, I think it was just a shame how few people showed up for the east side one, because I think that one was the one that would have targeted, you know, a lot of people that are, who a bicycle master plan will benefit, those that have to bike, those that are running around without helmets, getting in the kind of accidents that we've seen portrayed today, and we had the people ready to go in front, to be in front of them. I think we had the right people ready to go. So I'm agreeable with everything I've heard tonight. I think with the, one thing that just continues to bother me, two things that continue to bother me, well, maybe three, is this timeline thing. I've been around long enough, six years now, to know that if we get, as we get to the end of the year, and you bring back a draft in the fall, it's really a pretty cooked piece of draft in October and November, and after November, we and everybody else's staff disappear until February. And I know that's kind of probably pushing that, but I would like to see more information come back, you know, a meeting before that meeting of the draft, so to speak. And in particular, what's, my radar's really up on, number one, on the loss of street parking, and what that means. Tonight was the first time we saw the little notes up in the right-hand corner on the neighborhood projects, you know, so the projects were there graphically for us, but there weren't any notes up until tonight on, oh, this one involves five blocks of lost parking, or two blocks of lost parking, or a street of lost parking. And that concerns me. Doesn't make me less supportive, but it certainly makes me less advocate of standing in the shopping line at the supermarket when somebody's ready to yell at me about loss of parking in front of their house, and I, all I saw was a brief slide that went by on a meeting. So I'd really, I'd like to get some more information on that. The other main concern I have, and I think you've kind of heard it tonight, and you, both Peter and Rob, and I have had conversations about this, and that's the shying away from the word prioritize. But I've already heard some shades of that here tonight, that this is a project that's a more expensive project, it might be out further, this is a sooner project, this is just a paint project. You know, I think you need to make some attempt, if it's 24 bullets there, you need to make some attempt to give us some information on where those fit in a timeline, or a sooner or longer, a less expensive, a more expensive, a big safety issue exists, or a little safety exists, and what the return on investment would be, that type of thing. And then, that enables us to be in a position to begin to push, because I believe too, that the city needs to commit to this process. You can't just have a plan, but I think you need, you need the people at this table to be able to talk about and lobby for a commitment, because again, in a conversation with Peter, I've already heard, will say, that's a process on a street where we might want to shrink it from two lanes to one, but we're going to have to wait until the slurry sync schedule comes up. I'm going, well, not, if not if it's a real big gain in safety, a real big gain in connectivity, why aren't we saying, let's go do it now, and spend the money out of sync on the slurry? Why would we wait till later? Okay? And so, I think more information is needed there on all 24 of those, or all those nice pictures up on the map, on what, you know, if you had to pick one out of all of them, what is it? Okay, now take that one away and put it aside. Now, if you had to take one out of 23, what would it be? Some way of quantifying it to what rises to the top and what people can rally for. I was especially intrigued by the gentleman that talked about the business and economic and employee benefit link. I haven't heard anything talked about that as part of this presentation up till now, and I think that is something that needs to be further looked at, and a flag waved on that heavily in your upcoming presentations to council, or to anybody else, because I think that's a, that's a missing link to most people. I mean, Ed will kick me under the table, I can't remember the event I was at, but it was at Sonos, and to see the way that Sonos has embraced employee use of bicycling as a daily component, not as something that management has put on them, but that's something that has almost been from them up to management, and the type of worker, the pay of that worker, the contribution of that worker to this community, and if that's, if that can truly be shown to be a draw and a reason for both a bicycle master plan and a more aggressive bicycle master plan, then I certainly think that should be an ingredient of your presentation. Some of the accident information, I think the highest accidents were bicyclists at fault accidents, and also the highest accidents were either downtown or on the east side. And I think when you get back to talking about my version of whatever your priorities look like, I think your priorities should focus in those areas and on those accidents also. I would hazard probably that some of the accidents that are bicyclists at fault are a result of bicyclists not having better alternatives than to go one, go the wrong way on a one-way street, or to blow through an intersection, because that's the least problematic of their choices, and we should be offering them better choices so that they don't embrace that behavior. I think I heard a couple comments too, and I couldn't agree with this too. I get on a bike once every two weeks, and I go one place. I go down, you guys have heard this story, because I hate Cliff Drive, I go down Shoreline to the waterfront and up State Street, okay? I hate Shoreline, okay? And Ed's probably on his bike every day, right? But I think both of us deserve a reasonable, we both have a, both deserve and we have a reasonable expectation of having a safe and convenient experience, and I think, I think the city owes that to us, and I think it's due to somebody who's getting on a bike once every two weeks, or it's getting on a bike every day. As far as the map, with all the, with all the projects, I'm really high on the street changes that can be made, where the streets will turn into one-way streets with no loss of parking, and work in tandem that way, up and down, or east and west. I agree with Deborah's comments on the goals. You know, the first problem I saw on this introduction was, was the focus of the BMP is to engage the community, semicolon, okay? To me, the focus of the BMP is to have a tangible set of actions, goals, or priorities or projects after you go through the public engagement. So I get, I get the reasoning, because that's the direction you got from council, or that was the focus from council, but I agree too, that it's missing what you want to accomplish, and how you're going to get there, and tying priorities and feasibility into that. I would like to see better acknowledgement of Shoreline Drive coming off the Mesa rather than Cliff, that's just my personal experience. I don't, I've raised four kids there over 30 years, and we will not let our children ride or walk their, walk our dog on Cliff Drive. So I don't know where you saw that, but I cringed when you said that. All of them have gone to City College, and we've made them go down Shoreline, not Cliff Drive. It was mentioned that traffic is light on East Gabriel going to the 101, and I don't think that's necessarily going to be that way in the future. I think there might be an increase in traffic down that way, when you have improved highway 101 project with an on-ramp there, and we might be back to where we see two lanes backed up all the way around the corner on the end of a weekend. So I don't know that what you're looking at right now could result in losing a lane and feeling good about it in 10 years, 20 years, whenever that happens. And I think you need another east-west, my feeling is, there's too big of an east-west gap between Coda and Mitchell Trenna. And I, you know, I've been at every one of those meetings, and I've heard all the talking, but I'm just, I'm just kind of dismayed not to see an attempt to try and do something there, San Cano and Perdido or somewhere else. I just think, as you look up and down, up and down from south to north, I think there's a big gap in the east-west ability there, and I'd like, I'd like, you know, if you're going to be as aggressive on Mitchell Trenna as you are, I'd like to see you attempt to be as aggressive somewhere in the middle there, and do that. And then, finally, I've heard this a couple times too, and I had this written down before I heard it, and I think, I think the point needs to be further stressed and stressed, that improvements in bicycling infrastructure, if you want to call that, are definitely an improvement in pedestrian and driver structure. You know, as a driver, if bicyclists have whatever's going to end up out there, a secluded lane, a notified lane, a big green thing, I'm more aware of that, and that makes me a safer driver. I also think it improves the pedestrian experience, because they'll have more room to be seen or to see traffic if there's another set of separation between them and where the cars are too. And I think we fall into this tendency where we make this into a cars versus bikes argument, and I think we need to get out of that, get out of that argument as soon as we can by making it really clear that improvements related to a bicycle master plan also benefit the driving, the driving experience, and they also benefit the pedestrian experience. So thanks again. I think you guys have done a great job, a lot of work. I look forward to seeing the rest of this as we move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to say and echo, kudos to the team. You did what you were asked in an exemplary fashion, and thank you. I think that what we're hearing from the community input process of the last few months is that the community is telling us, and this group is helping give a voice to, that we need goals. We need a network, and we haven't yet in the city of Santa Barbara built a complete bicycle network. And the community is saying, we need that, we need to fill the gaps. We also need some level of ambition to serve the needs of cyclists, but beyond that, actually to have a bike plan for everybody. I would argue that what we're looking at today is a bike plan that continues on the circulation element, which remains today. The circulation element of the late 90s is still our circulation element, and we still have those goals of equality of modes, and it should be, it should be easy to choose to ride a bike, it should be easy to walk downtown, it should be easy to drive. And we've dropped the ball on a major part of our bikeway network, because it's not always easy. We've talked about data, there's a dearth of data, there's not much available. What there is available in terms of safety, in terms of census information, we're hearing from the community, we want to take a good, hard look, and see how that, how that we can serve the needs, and I would argue, look at that data through the lens of a goal to actually accomplish something. We've got this great network, but there's no goal, there's nothing that we're actually trying to accomplish. Well, there's safety, we want to, we want to address safety. But also, the example that Mr. Gray from the Community Environmental Council brought up was of San Luis Obispo, of a 20% mode share. Well, mode share is kind of a... Well, mode share is is kind of a tricky item because a lot of people think that there's like different classes of people somehow and that there are cyclists and that there are these people that are called pedestrians, right? Whereas that's of course not reality. There's Santa Barbarans and we choose to get around whether it's, you know, a a nice bike ride every two weeks or, you know, a 1.2 bike mile bike ride that I'm able, fortunate enough, living in downtown Santa Barbara, to be able to do, right? So we take different trips. And I would say a great goal that I think would be in keeping with the input we're getting from the community is short trips should be easy by bike in the city of Santa Barbara. And if you're Iver John on electric bike, a long trip is also easy. And and I love the comment actually from the the last speaker that we had from the public who said, listen to the cyclists. And I I would elucidate that comment to mean, put yourself in the the clip-in pedal shoes of a cyclist who has had probably a number of close calls, who, if you if you interviewed a lot of people biking in Santa Barbara, quite a few have probably been hit or I've certainly been hit and, you know, taken to Cottage Hospital because somebody didn't see me as I continued straight on Mission, you know, not not even an intersection. And so there's that background stress. And then there's actually mapping that more sophisticated, I hate to say it, more sophisticated cities, because we are no longer in that ranking in terms of bicycling, more sophisticated cities, look at levels of stress. How stressful is it to get through different routes? Well, since every single one of our routes is incomplete, there's a very stressful segment on every single route. And so that 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 empathy is important. I was I was growling a little bit earlier, but actually I really appreciate Mr. Jordan's comment about the about the, we're talking, I think it was said, something on the scale of like 10 blocks of of parking removals being looked at, which is a very radical concept for this city because we were only doing the easy stuff, aside from some very involved infrastructure projects. But removal of parking was just out of the question. But what's funny is that some of the comments on the the blogosphere, or as I call it, the trollosphere, were saying, look out, Santa Barbara, you know, they're coming to get you. They're going to take 10,000 parking spaces away, crippling the city. And we're looking at maybe, you know, with surgical precision, removing something like one five-hundredth of that or one one-hundredth of that. You know, that's what reality, it's almost like thinking about a very invasive surgery, like say you have something going on with your intestines and you're worried that they're going to put a big gash in you and like move around organs and get in there. And then you have the the pre-surgery meeting with the doctor, they actually say, oh, no, we've actually got a little scope that goes in there. We actually only make an inch, you know, that's what we're talking, we're talking about surgical precision. When you look at completing this network, which I think that was the major brunt of what our consultants and staff have done, looking at completing the network, the trade-off has been minimized as much as as humanly possible and as engineeringly possible. And we're talking about a surgical strike. And I think Mr. Jordan's comments are adept in that we need to be really open about that and we need to put that out there. So for example, Mitchell Torena. Mitchell Torena is probably half of the parking removal that is considered in this plan. And for each of these, there's actually an alternative, right, that could potentially achieve the same goal. So if Mitchell Torena, and I moved into Santa Barbara right when they completed Mitchell Torena, and I was kind of shocked because for a bicyclist, it's like a launch ramp that lands into a wall. Because if you are going from State Street and trying to get to the west side, which a lot of west side residents would like to do, or going from the west side towards State Street in downtown, you have this nice flowy bridge that's visible. So people see it. They don't see Annapamoo, they don't see Ortega, and this is well-lit, it's clear, it's the most heavily used bike pad crossing, at least according to the Strava data that the city has. And then you run the gauntlet and there's double yellow lines and it's a narrow lane and that first block is is all parking and you're putting your life in your hands just across town. And what I think we're hearing from the public is that's totally unacceptable. And the challenge that is now in play is, okay, how do we fix that? And can the city complete a bike network? Can we make a trade-off that will vastly improve the quality of life for residents that do bike or might just want to bike on a rare occasion through their neighborhood for the trade-off that may in fact be able to be partially offset? And I think that's the scale of trade-offs that we're looking at, but indeed, we need to be very open about that. We need to get that out to the public and and eyes wide open, you know, like that surgical pre-op, are you ready for the surgery? You will you will feel better. You will be healthier afterwards. You're going to have an inch, you know, incision. So that's my take on that. I I will also challenge us to think about the return of investment, slightly less block by block of of bike route. I think the one of the rankings there was in terms of closing the gaps was one of the the top priorities. If closing the gaps is top priority, then the value is the network. And the emergent property is a functional network. So the return on investment is, once we have a functional network, what's our return on that? And I think the problem is we have very competent staff that have very limited information for bicycling. And to be able to compute, you know, block by block, is this worth more as a bike lane here or that? I think really it's it's more of a in in general. But with that said, I think that from the presentation given, I would wholeheartedly support moving the the bike plan forward to the next stage, which will have further committee and public review.
Thank you. Mr. Campanella? Sure. Or Ms. Lodge, can we go next?
I'm going to try to keep my comments very brief. I do want to remind everybody that on the summary, it points out that the survey was self-selected, respondents were self-selected, and they were responding because it was about bicycling and the bicycle master plan. So there are a lot of people who cannot ride bikes, there are a lot of people who do not ride bikes. However, given given that said, I think that the the team has done a good job and they seem to have gotten a lot of good community input and I can support moving forward with it. I do want to suggest that Mitchell Torena, when I when I heard bike lanes on both sides on Mitchell Torena, I thought, no way. I would like to suggest that you consider, as with Mission and Pedragosa, that you pair Mitchell Torena with Sola and use it instead of Mitchell Torena because it also is a relatively low-traffic street, as is Pedragosa. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Campanella?
In September, there'll be a report issued by Community Development Staff that measures implementation of our general plan policies. And that's every segment of the plan. It's circulation, housing, health, our community plan to cut back on greenhouse gases, et cetera. And they'll be going down each potential implementation item to help implement these policies and saying what actions are being taken. And that's that's done every year. So I I look upon this in picking up on with Commissioner Schwartz that there are a number of policies and a number of implementations and goals in our general plan that are satisfied by this master plan, be it health, transportation, cutting down on vehicle miles traveled, cutting down on greenhouse gas. So I think in your presentation to City Council that you touch upon these goals that we report on and how are we going to satisfy them and show how this could help. As far as the consultants and the plan that we have, I presume you've you've done studies like this, bike studies in a number of different municipalities. I don't want to say we're easy, but having a grid and having the street network already in place, I'm sure accomplishes a lot versus some other communities that you're in where you may need bridges or new roads or different infrastructure in order to try to make the connectivity. So we've got a grid. I look at the backbone and it's it seems like the the benefits for the cost, the cost is incremental because we're not doing any bridges or new roadways or parkways or along some channel in LA where we have to try to get infrastructure in. So I'm hopeful that the the cost element on this relative what the benefit is is going to be pretty small. I think the the factor that got me a lot in the study was the number of people that both bike and drive for their daily trips. And so there can be a conversion that takes place, it's just not making it easier for bikers. If we can start reducing those six trips a day that each household takes by converting the drivers to bikers, in addition to trying to reduce commuter trips, et cetera, by providing some more housing in the city, I think the goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled really can be achieved quite quickly and quite readily within the city confines itself. With that comes reduction of greenhouse gas, which the state is, you know, making all municipalities really concentrate on and try to reduce those levels. So I think I I look at this as an implementation tool of our policies and the results that can be made. I also see it, I also see the issue of what do the of the survey that had to take place to communicate and satisfy the City Council on their questions. I I think you're really accomplishing both and I I'd probably recommend taking both of those stacks. Number one, we've did what extract what was instructed in a great way. And number two, what are the benefits to our general plan of accomplishing this on an integrated basis, both for safety and for health reasons? I mentioned before also to look at the benefit this could have or how we can improve the benefit for visitors who are clustered in one area. We have a children's museum going in right now on Lower State along with everything else. How are the kids going to get there? I mean, taking their bike, I know we're short on parking and that's what people have to get to those facilities. So look at how to, one, consider those conflicts potentially and also the education aspect. As I said before, for visitors, bring your bike, you know, park once, take the bike around. Not just think that it's complicated here to bike and I they don't want to get involved in it because they're not used to the bikeways. So I see that as an opportunity as well. I think what's, I'm not going to concentrate on particular roadways, but I think the methodology that you went through was great. I heard no negatives from people here today relative to what the benefit is or how the process was encouraged. And I think the fact that you're going to analyze each one of these down to the nitty-gritty to see what really works and doesn't, what the impact is on cross streets and other circulation is going to come up with a good result. So I'm in favor that the community engagement process is complete and I'm in favor recommending to the council and the consultants to move forward in developing the draft bicycle master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
I'd like to also compliment the the work of staff and the consultants. Well done. But there's a potential for something that is called unexpected, I'm sorry, unfulfilled expectations. And there's a lot of things that I think will be long-term. If they're not spelled out in this go-around, I think we may get some upset people. The same thing on unfulfilled expectations. Certainly, we're not going out with 100,000 or 10,000 parking spaces, but I think the streets that are under consideration should be identified. Politically, I think it's it's hard, but, you know, I think people deserve that. And I'd like to somehow beg that the charts that go to the council, the process chart, this is the beginning and the end of the presentation. If you take a look at it a second, you'll see that the first block is wasted space. And I'd like to use that space to insert a block for October because I think October is going to be a very, very busy month. And I think it'll highlight at least the role that the committees need to need to have. But right now, we're not on that in that block, in the August-October block. So one small thing, I was just in London, Barclays Bank pays or at least sponsors the bike sharing. And we talked about business involvement. I think we've got some opportunity to fund some of this, some of these future ideas with the some business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would you like to speak? Mr. Tom?
Very briefly, I think you've done an excellent job, like everybody else has said. And you've gotten some really good suggestions from the committee and the commission and the public today that I'm sure you'll roll in. A couple that I would like to emphasize that struck me too, and one is the idea of including in the formatting of your draft plan, the program goal statements and focus on the purpose and the fact that we're implementing general plan and a circulation element. It all needs to be tied together. And the idea of prioritization, maybe you don't prioritize 1 through 27 or whatever the different numbers are, but maybe you have three or four different categories of priorities of which you think we should address in what order. The idea that the plan is, as it stands right now, is deficient in discussing at all connectivity to the county surrounding the the city is is important. I think we ought to look just beyond the boundaries of the city, as Commissioner Higgins suggested. And very briefly, I would just comment to Commissioner Jordan that Cabrillo Boulevard east of Milpus is already a parking lot in the afternoon. It's not going to be coming in a few years, it is right now. So there's a lot of other, but you you've gotten a lot of good feedback and I think it's ready to move forward to the council. And and I encourage you to roll the ideas that you got today into the document. Maybe it won't be in before you go to the council, but when you do the draft, assuming the council approves moving forward, which I believe they will, then you should include a lot of the stuff you heard today. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, oh, Ms. Rodriguez.
I I just wanted to get back to the word complete. I think we talked about that earlier because that stuck out with me when I read it initially, that it can mean it's overcompleted or it can mean that it's thorough, but I'm not sure which. And I think you want it to be really clear. So if if you're intending to say that it's been thorough and adequate, I think that would be, or some other words to that, you understand what I'm saying? So I think that the word complete can be interpreted in two or three different ways. So I'm not sure. What is it that you want to say?
You know, regarding the recommendation, if you look at the staff report, I don't know how many people actually have it in front of them. The staff report actually has a different recommendation than the than the presentation.
We're looking at the staff. Commissioner Fugio and I were referencing.
Yeah. The staff report, page one, the first paragraph, planning Commission TCC, find the community engagement process complete.
I might be looking at another copy.
The council authorized.
But we're we're comfortable with the language, the language you choose. The 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 purpose of the doing that is to say, you know, obviously, there was a lot of people who commented tonight, right? And we want to take everyone's, of course, we're always going to listen to everyone, all the steps of the plan, but there was like this set, this set time where we gathered all these touchpoints of information and summarized it. And I think that that's what we're getting at, that that set. Someone mentioned the phase.
Madam Chair?
If you would look in the conclusion paragraph in the staff report, I think that's pretty much what Rob is getting to there. It has slightly different wording. It says the the, the team is recommending that we, it's written up in the conclusion.
On page three.
Recommend that, that all of the network improvements in the proposed facility chapter of the public outreach and safety findings summary be further developed for consideration in the draft BMP. The network improvements, okay, yeah.
Madam Chair, while they're mulling that over, I had one more comment that I didn't get in, and Allison's still here, so I'll make her, wait a second. But we talked about this at the, I think at the, the presentation to Planning Commission. And I think this is our problem, but, but we need to, as this goes forward, also work on the city requirements for bicycle storage in approved projects. So just pick one, you know, Alma de Pueblo. We had a requirement there down in the basement. And I'm sure it's just a door with a knob set in an empty room, which doesn't work really well if you're going to expect, you know, it's, there's room, supposedly room for 20 bicycles there, but, you know, they all fall over. What, are you going to do that? So I'm sure the Sonos place is a little nicer than that. I didn't get to go in the room. But I know it's card-controlled, with a real door that opens and locks, notices when people come in. I've been in the Garden Street, or the, the garage, what am I thinking of?
Granada.
Granada, not garden, thinking, Granada Garage, garage facility, where they have real racks and a controlled door. But those are the types, as we go forward in this, and we expect to see returns on this, of bicyclists coming into downtown and commuting. We also need to burden new developments that have bicycle storage requirements with appropriate types of, of storage units, rather than just space in a room somewhere in a, in a, you know, the, the belly of the beast. And I think that's something we need to work on from our, I guess, our zoning ordinance standpoint, or, or our discretionary approvals, and make that, make that a focus. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
As to the language and the recommendation, which I would be happy to make as a motion or a second to a motion, I suppose, I was thinking of something very simple, like saying, recommend that the council authorize the next phase of the project to develop the draft bicycle master plan, which I would call, which includes further analysis of all the initial bicycle network improvements.
Is that a Planning Commission motion?
That could be a Planning Commission motion.
Making the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second from the Planning Commission? These will be two different motions for the two committees.
Second. I'll second-
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Pujol and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Is any discussion to the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And Commissioner Lodge is, and Commissioner Higgins are both absent. Over to the TCC.
Chair Bosch, I would like, I'd like to have a motion that we approve the exact same language on behalf of the Transportation and Circulation Committee.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? I never got to speak, but I really do echo everything that everybody else said, so I'll just keep it at that. And let's go ahead and call the question.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of the motion? Aye. Opposed?
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And, you know, it's really interesting. I just, kind of just, you know, I would love to go through each one and just, and say how appreciative we are of the comments. It's very good. It's very rich. I'll tell you, the one tenor that I didn't expect to hear, that I heard really loud and clearly, and because we're in the staff world, we've completely forgotten about, and really, by design, have not thought about, and I think I mentioned, hinted a little bit in the beginning, is we, there's all these policies, general plan policies, circulation element policies that say that we should do all of this. And we've been very intentional not to talk about them. But what we can do is, we can say that this is what the Planning Commission and TCC spoke very, very clearly and loudly about, because I think I heard it from almost every one of you. And so in addition to that, there are many, many other things that you said that we will be passing on to the council. But I just wanted to kind of highlight that as something that's different, unexpected, but understandable and very clear. So, thank you.
Mr. Green?
Your mic, go.
Thank you. Is the date for the council been determined? And second part of that is, what is that date?
It's an evening session on July 21st, which is a week from this Tuesday.
I know that Planning Commission meetings are usually videoed and therefore have life beyond the meeting. I would ask that the next time this comes forward, that we arrange the meeting to be included in the city network, SBTV.
It is. This was all filmed and recorded. Surprise. You were caught.
TCC is always-
Howard Green caught on tape.
No going back.
Although, although the millennials won't know what tape is. Anyway.
I didn't see any worrying cameras.
So you can watch the reruns to, to your satisfaction.
We don't have to. This meeting is adjourned.